We call the meeting to order at six o'clock. And so this is budget meeting number four for the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, Administration and Finance Committee, the whole. And it's the budget number four of the 2020 budget cycle. And before I call for approval of the agenda, there are a couple of changes, just minor changes to the agenda. At six F, we have a Public Library Board presentation and the CEO of the library, Donna Gladstone, is here. I'd just like to move six F up to become six A. And so we'll, so Donna can make her presentation rather than waiting for half the meeting to go through. So we'll deal with that six F first. And then, I know much to disagree on a few people, I will have a short mayor's report just after the question period. But it will be short. Or shorter.
You were doing so well?
Yeah. Don't disappoint us. So Chair's looking for approval of the agenda as amended. I have Deputy Mayor Deschaffet, does he have a second or please? I have Counselor Dillabah. Goes in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the disclosure to cuny interests and the general nature thereof. Any disclosures received?
I have one, I filled it out.
Oh, okay. Tell us what the general nature of your disclosure.
I'm the treasurer of the library. And last year I got into a lot of trouble by making my opinion known and so I've gotta stay out of it.
So you've filled it and you're gonna file it with the clerk? Okay?
I don't wanna have to deal with the girls again, they're pretty tough.
Well, my condolences. Okay. And so now I'm on item number four on the agenda. Item number four on the agenda is business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. And the minutes of that meeting were circulated, you have them in front of you. Does anybody have anything arising from that meeting that they would like to have clarified or highlighted? Made a number of decisions at that meeting, we'll be reviewing those decisions here as we go forward with our discussions. Okay, nobody's raising any issues, I'm about to move on. And so actually on number five, we do have the delegation there for the presentation. We'll deal with that now and then we'll deal with that just immediately after that presentation. So Ms. Gladstone, if you'd like to make your presentation now, and then we'll see how it fits in with our agenda just after you've made your presentation.
Thank you.
I should say welcome as well. I think this is the first time we've seen you since you've taken your position as CEO.
I believe it is and it's just coming up to a year in May, so that's kind of exciting. So thank you for allowing me this presentation. And I do apologize because being as new as I am and working 10 hours a week, it, time is hard to get everything together. So I'm just gonna give you some highlights and would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if I don't have the answers, we'll definitely get them for you. And so just, just some information, the library budget increased in 2018 from ninety-five-thousand five hundred to a hundred and five thousand five hundred and has remained that and we are asking for the same this year. Again, in May 2019, I was hired as the CIO at 10 hours per week and I worked between both Cardinal and Spencerville branch. During the last few years and including this coming year, the wages have decreased and that has been due to less hours for the CEO and some changes in the organization. In 2019, we received monies through our adopt a computer program and it has enabled us to purchase four new computers so far, two for each branch. And something that is relatively new, it's also enabled us to contract with Play-It-Star monthly maintenance agreement. So now staff and patrons are not stuck with outdated and computers and computers that aren't working properly because they haven't been maintained. It's also saving us some money in terms of our recent programs that we have purchased are now through a charitable company or it's called TechSoup. And for libraries, it's a, an opportunity for libraries to make the purchase at a reduced cost and it's a one-time fee for things like Microsoft. So Play-It-Star has given us, because they work with other libraries, have been able to give us, provide us some extra savings in areas that we didn't know we could save The patrons, we continue to register new patrons. As of today, my count was 90 patrons in 2019 and Cardinal and 43 were added in Spencerville. So as of today, our total membership is eighteen-hundred-and-seventy-nine membership cards. And based on 2018 library stats, the total circulation, and this is based on a, an average week, which we do for our, our library statistics. And so based on 2018, the total circulation of library material in a week, in an average week, is 395 pieces. The number of visits in person to the library is 294.
Per week?
Per week, an average week. And 70 hits to our website and 50 hits to social media, which is our Facebook. Both branches in the last year have seen a significant increase in requests for large print books. Our patrons are in that age group where, as I am, where a large print is much easier for folks to read. And so that, so our book budget is certainly taking a hit somewhat with that because our books now average about $45, more than the $30 books that we could, we could get. We do get reductions through our suppliers, but large print, the discounts are pretty minimal. We also have large print pools, two, our two large print pools in Spencerville, which is a rotation. And that's paid nominal fee that we pay. And we have one large print pool that circulates four times a year in Cardinal. And as with most years, our provincial funding, we never know how much we'll get or if we'll get any, so I would ask that you keep that in mind in your deliberations. And again, I thank you and for answering any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation and I am gonna ask you just one question. Doesn't relate to something that you've just spoken about, but I welcome Mr. Bradley and if you'd just give him a second, I think he'll get a seat. The question that I had was during the year, I think it was just this past year, the interlibrary service that was run by the province seemed to be discontinued. Am I correct about that?
It was reestablished.
Or was?
It had no significant impact to, to any of us. They found ways to make it happen at minimal fees and it was a very, very short time where they didn't have funds or they weren't sure how they were going to receive the funds, but it all worked out.
And how do they do it now? Because I think before, wasn't there a vehicle that actually did the?
Yes, so, so right now it's done by, our souls representative is Peggy Malcolm and she does deliveries. We also, I had went to a library committee meeting and anytime that the libraries can get together and we can exchange those boxes, basically of books, and then we do that. So it's, they found a way to do it without having the use of vehicles and it's just kind of done on a rotation, so it's worked out great.
Okay, so we'll start to see if there's any other questions for Mrs. Gladstone and we'll start down this end. I just have one, do you, are you working, Donna, with Prescott and Augusta a lot closer to libraries?
Prescott, we, we borrow materials from them as they do us. And Augusta, not as much, they're so much further away.
Right.
But certainly we, we use all libraries within the area as resources.
Okay, so it's more of the trading of resources than, than anything else?
Yeah, I, I mean, we carpool Jane with Jane, that kind of stuff, but that's, at this point, that's the extent of it, yeah.
Counselor Cameron.
I have no questions, but I'll just clarify the, the problem with the delivery of the, of the books. It was a very short times, time period, it was only about three weeks that there was any inconvenience and then they, they thought that they could go about it. Thank you.
Okay, so this way that was found, was that sort of devised by the, the library network themselves or was it?
It was, it was done through the, the Souls Group, the Southern Ontario Library Association.
Oh, okay. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thanks Donna for the presentation. Mine's more a comment than a question. We see you there, you know, pretty much on a weekly basis when we're in. Mine's more of a compliment to the library, the excellent staff, the friendly nature, the helpfulness. The, the building always seems at least to, to us when we go in in great repair and very cool. And there's always a wonderful selections of, a selection of books and when we can't find what we're looking for, we ask and somebody puts it, somebody does help us put it aside. In fact, I got a phone call on Saturday when somebody found a book that I'd been looking for and wasn't able to get it. That service is, is excellent and I think it's, it should be committed.
Thank you for all that stuff, Donna, I appreciate that.
Counselor Hunter.
We had a program, I believe, that runs both libraries for business adopting computers for you. I see you've got on here, you purchased computers last year, 2,600. The program for business sponsorship of the computers fell through, you're just buying the computers yourself or?
No, the intent with the adopted computer was that we asked for donations and then we would purchase the computers if we could. We received 5,000 and some extra dollars and that went to purchase four new computers. And it's also, we're also using it as our maintenance, for our maintenance contract. We still need to purchase more computers.
Businesses donated 5,000 to you?
Yes, businesses and individuals.
I don't see it on the, where it's recorded. I guess here, I see it on what it is.
Reported in the revenue.
Do you have nothing budgeted for you this year for donations, nobody's come forward or?
Yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't budgeted for that, for this year.
So you're talking about how the budget of the revenue?
Well, showing the revenue last year, but I just wondered, there was nothing really budgeted in that near that amount for this year. They got a thousand dollars budgeted for donations, I see there, but this year you actually had just a 500 donation, so.
Yeah, we, based on the, the extra monies that are, are in the, the bank account right now, we didn't feel that we should go out and ask for more money at this point. So we're hoping to use that money to.
How many more computers do you figure you need to get up to full?
Spencerville is that complement now, so we're looking at six more for Cardinal.
Oh, six more.
Yeah.
How many does Cardinal have now?
Cardinal has eight.
Eight, you want to have 14? You want to replace six of the eight?
Well, we, we've replaced two of the eight, so we need to replace the other, the other six in Cardinal. Spencerville has four. And the Friends Group had purchased a computer and then two computers were purchased and the one hard drive was, was updated and that was the only thing that was wrong with that, so. And we wanted to stagger, of course, because all the computers that were purchased prior were all refurbished. So it, we felt that this was a time to start replacing new and then we had better room for the patrons.
Are you looking for laptop computers or fixed computers or?
Their desktop computers and their, their patron computers.
Mr. Bradley.
No questions.
No questions and Mr. Robertson has cut himself out. So I, I just have a couple of questions. As you know, we have your presentation in front of us and we have a briefing note as well. I'm assuming that you've seen the briefing note?
Yeah.
And I guess, I, I guess it's fair to say that this is budget meeting number four. We're not balanced yet and we are still looking at, we've gotta make some changes, I think tonight probably, another look at our capital and we'll have, probably have another look at our operating. And so I'm, I'm painting the sad story to say how tight things are. I, you've been here before.
I have. I've already visualized it, it's a painting on my way here.
So we're aware, and you did reference it yourself, you do have some, some funds available in your bank account, I think that's generating a bit of interest for you as well. So I'm just hopeful that you'll be a little bit understanding of our position.
I certainly appreciate that and I'm certainly not gonna stand here and, and ask you to reduce our budget. However, I would hope that if the reduction happens, that it wouldn't be more than what the report has put forward and that, you know, that next year is another year and we look at things maybe different.
Yes.
But I do appreciate that. And I mean, I can't argue what's, what's in front of you, the numbers and as a taxpayer, I understand where you're coming from, but please be gentle is, I guess, what I'm asking.
We appreciate your understanding. Does anyone else have any other questions before I thank Mrs. Gladstone one final time?
Can I ask, so of that, of the surplus, Donna, that's there, the 19202, how much of that, I don't have the other document in front of me that Counselor Hunter was referring to, but how much of that would be grant money that, or adopted computer money? Is any of that surplus actually adopted computer?
None of that surplus is.
Okay, that was my concern. Okay, that's good.
Okay, well, once again, thank you very much for coming and we do know that at 10 hours a week, you, you have to find extra time to, to prepare for presentations like this evening and we appreciate the time that you spend. And I say, very pleased to hear that you stepped up to that CEO position when it became vacant about a year or so ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I did originally think that we would deal with F here right now and I think maybe it's fair to do that while, while Mrs. Gladstone is still here. You heard her say that she wasn't going to sit and plead for more, but, and she certainly wasn't going to recommend a reduction, but we do have a briefing note in front of us and you can see that there has been some extensive discussion between our staff and, and Mrs. Gladstone and our staff is recommending that the ask, which was 105,000 and 500 as the municipal grant to the library, our staff is recommending to council that the 2020 Municipal Library Board grant be 90. So the staff is recommending that the amount be reduced by 15.5 and I think from the briefing note, you can see where that recommendation has come from. So I'm at item five on the, excuse me, I'm at item F on the agenda, as you can tell, and the briefing note is there. Mrs. Donna, Mrs. Gladstone is still here and I'd like to have some discussion and debate on the recommendation that we have in front of us. And failing any debate, I'd like to have a mover and a seconder to, to action the recommendation. Where are we, gentlemen? Mr. Cameron, Counselor Cameron.
Knowing, knowing how much the municipal, the, the library is such an integral part of our community, I, I suffer with the 90,000, I, I really do, but on the, on the other, on the other hand, because I'm also a member of the library board, I do realize that there are extra dollars available and I just, I'll come out and say, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would, I would support this recommendation at 90.
Okay, and, and I appreciate those words and, but, but because you are a member of the library board, I'm gonna ask you to either move or second the recommendation.
Then I won't.
Thank you very much. So, and I know Mr. Robertson won't either. So gentlemen, looking for a mover and a seconder for the recommendation?
I'll move it.
I have Counselor Dillavah and does Counselor Dillavah have a seconder on the recommendation? Looking for a seconder for the recommendation? All right, have Counselor Hunter seconding. And the recommendation again, that committee recommends to council that the 2020 Municipal Library Board grant be 90,000 dollars. Further discussion on the recommendation. Looking to call the questions or?
Just, just for clarification, after going through the note again, ultimately it ends up with no impact, with a direct impact with, with it being dropped to 90 because of the surplus being run forward.
That's correct.
That's, it's clear. So, so even though it appears as one, it really with the line items that shouldn't have been in the budget, cut out, it ultimately ends up not really having a direct impact.
Well, and, and I guess the, I'm not gonna call it misleading because it's not, but on the paper trail that we have in front of us, which is basically just a revenue and expense sheet, we do not see the bank account balance. And the staff gives us the bank account balance in the briefing note. So you can't, in this particular case, you cannot judge the, the issue on the basis of the revenue and expense statement that we have in front of us. We have to also take into account the balance in the bank account.
Comments made.
Just to comment, I gotta say, I seconded the motion, I agree with, I agree with it. The reason I did was on account of, as just the deputy mayor said, it really doesn't have an effect this year on, on the balance. But I, I do believe that it's such a case that their balance is drastically reduced this year, but next year we, we anticipate that we go back to whatever grant was in future years, so past years.
Well, I, I think that would be certainly something that would give comfort to the library board members and, and the representative on the board.
I would echo that as well.
Mr. Bradley, you ready to call it?
No, I have only, well, from the briefing note, the question that was in my mind was how much would the surplus be drawn down this year? And are we creating a problem, like as Counselor Hunter says, are we creating a problem for the following year where the grant would have to go into like 110, 115 to make up for the expenses in the, in the library? Now, if they have to purchase six computers, you're looking at, I don't know if we do it in one year, but we're looking at several thousand dollars for that kind of a capital loan.
Okay, well, Mrs. Gladstone is still here, let me put your, let me put your question if you would, if you wouldn't mind. So we have the briefing note from the staff indicating the balance in the bank account. And so my question to you is Mr. Bradley's question, do you anticipate a large, a large drawdown of that bank account in the 2020 year?
I mean, our, as I said, our, our large print is going to increase, so our budget currently is, there's probably another five to 10,000 dollars that we'll see potentially in large, in, in book orders because of purchasing, because of the large print and computers. I'm not sure we're gonna get all six computers this year, but yes, there's a substantial amount of money. Are we gonna reduce it by the total amount? I, I can't answer that, but yes, we'll, we'll definitely be reducing it.
Okay. But you don't anticipate a major wiping it out?
No.
Okay. I think that's what we need to hear at this point. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna call the question on the recommendation that has been duly moved and seconded. Goes in favor? Motion is carried. So that deals with that item on the agenda and once again, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm at item six on the agenda and I'm at item six A, which is review of the 2020 draft capital budget revisions. And we'll go back to where we were when we left meeting number three. And so I'm turning then now to page nine of 32. And that's the capital revised as of the end of budget number three. And to just put some context around that, and see if I can find what I'm looking for I think we're at the point, maybe I'll get the treasurer to help me out here. We're not balanced, through the, through the CIO to the treasurer, if you would, if you wouldn't mind. We're not balanced as of this point in time, but I just can't find the spot in my briefing note here, which tells me how much additional money we have to find to be balanced or to raise.
Certainly I'll, I'll have the treasurer answer that.
Right. Through the chair, the first, the information item that, that's provided in this six A doesn't act, doesn't actually indicate that, but on your six B, it does tell you where we currently sit as, as to the amount of money additional tax revenue we require. So the current tax revenue needed still to balance us would be 191,759.
Yes, okay, there it is on page 11 of 32.
Right.
So at this point, we're 191,759 short of balance.
Correct.
Okay, so that sort of paints the context of what we're dealing with here this evening. And the first place that we're going to look is on page nine of 32 as we, as we review the capital. Now, again, I'm gonna try, as we go through here, I'm gonna try to tie in two or three different things at the same time, all bearing on the same issue. And I'm gonna try to pick the low hanging fruit here first. So further in the briefing note and in the package, and I'm just, see if I can get, get it up here. Where is the recommendation that dealt with the truck?
Mr. Chair, that is, will be six G.
Six, six G?
Yes, 2020 capital projects update.
Okay, and it's under recreation vehicle, right?
There, there are three items under that particular.
All right, so now.
This would be 2020 capital project update.
Yeah, what is the, what is the page reference?
Page 28 of 32.
28 of 32. So let's just tab 28 of 32 and the, and on the. So let's just tab twenty-eight of thirty-two, and the, and on the briefing note here, we see that the staff is, is addressing themselves to the question of the truck purchase. At a previous budget meeting, committee had discussed about the option of the Port of Johnstown donating a truck instead of a township capital purchase. There are a couple of other options that committee may wish to consider. Option number one is to finance the purchase, and staff lays out the fact that there is a one percent interest rate financing available on 2019 models while supplies last. If committee decided to finance that truck over twenty-eight months, over forty-eight months, the monthly payments based on a forty-two thousand retail value would be eight seventy-nine a month. The impact on the 2020 budget would be seven thousand nine hundred transferred to operational costs and taking thirty-five of capital. And so I just, and the also, staff also provides an alternative under option two, which is a lease. So I would like to have some discussion about those two alternatives as we're looking through this capital list. So opening the, the discussion on that issue. Who's first up? Nobody. Counselor Cameron.
I do not like the option number two for lease. If anything, I would look hard at the option number one on a, on a true zero, zero percent interest rate financing.
For forty-eight months.
Correct.
Okay, that's one speaker. Do I have other speakers?
I agree with Counselor Cameron on that. I don't see that lease at all, because we've got a twenty-seven thousand dollar buy, buy out at the end of four years, and being using a township, we're definitely going to have to buy it out, because the damage would be too much on it, it'd be charged, because you drive a lease yourself, and if you've got a scratch on it, that's two or three thousand dollars added to the buyout, so you're, you're definitely going to have to buy it out, and rough estimate is going to cost us seven thousand, four years, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand in lease payments, and that's going to be fifty-six thousand dollars that we're going to pay for a forty-two thousand dollar truck, so I'd say we, if we get zero percent interest, we're far enough to be buying it, paying it over the four years.
Okay, so I have two, I have two speakers in favor of option one, financing a twenty, a 2019 model. And by the way, I just want to clarify one thing through the CAO to the staff again, the, the option one is based on zero interest rate financing on available 2019 models while supplies last. Do we know that such animals exist?
As of a couple days ago, yes.
Okay. All right, so I think one of the implications here would be that if we decided to go with this option, that we would have to provide pre-budget approval to make sure that we were able to get into the marketplace quickly enough. Do I have other speakers to this issue? Counselor, Deputy Mayor?
So this would, if I'm reading this right, because I had the, the questions for the thirty-five thousand that was, that was in, that would remove thirty-five from the capital side and, and put roughly ten thousand in operations.
But, well, I would say eight in operations.
Through, through the chair, it, it would put in eight.
Eight to operation. Could be eight.
You get twenty-seven thousand off tax.
Where do you stand, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Or, or better. I liked it last year, but it didn't work last year, though.
Anybody else want to speak to this?
Option one.
Option one, you're with it?
Yeah.
Mr. Bradley?
Option one?
Option one, Mr. Bradley?
I like option two.
Oh, you do?
Well, I'll look at it for a second. Option one is a two thousand and nineteen.
New.
Yeah, it's still going to be depreciating.
Yep.
Option two is a two thousand and twenty.
Yep.
Six thousand dollars difference in purchase price, which is far less than what the depreciation would be. Secondly, you can structure the lease, so the buyout is a dollar, if you want, and that would affect the monthly payments, of course, approximately five hundred and eighty bucks additional, but I mean, you could make it a thousand bucks, or five hundred bucks, whatever you want. So in some ways, the lease could be financially attractive. So I don't know if we've considered it, you know, everybody's option one, option one, option one, but we're going to get a one-year-old.
Not going to make any difference to the township, though, because we don't get nothing further when we sell them anyway, so.
Well, that's our fault. And so Mr. Bradley makes some interesting points, back to Counselor Cameron.
Yes, the, on the forty-eight month lease, just to, just to come, come back to Mr. Bradley's comments, is there any kind of a maintenance package with that? Is there maintenance included or anything like that?
Through the chair, it would just be the basic sixty thousand kilometers maintenance on, on the vehicle.
And we have that on option one?
That is correct, yes.
So we're, there's no trade-off there?
There's no trade-off.
Thank you.
I, I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify one thing here. So Mr. Bradley is, is correct about one thing, and that is that you can restructure these leases so that there is no buyouts. And on option one, the monthly payment is eight seventy-nine. On option two, the lease, the op, the monthly lease is six twenty-three. I'm wondering what the effect would be if you leased that even nine hundred a month? You know, that would almost reduce your residual.
Well, I, I divided the twenty-seven, eight by forty-eight, but it gives you five eighty, five seventy-nine.
But there is one, there is one factor, though, that's missing from option two, and that's the interest rate.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Those can mean a lot.
Yeah, I know, but.
Much required, at least.
And kilometers, eh?
Yeah, what kilometers.
Okay, well.
Pay nine thousand dollars, it's up there here, they're charging you interest for four years on the lease, so.
Here's the thing, option two may have some other advantages to us on, that are unknown because they're not in front of us. I'm here tonight, and I'm here now, and I, I want to deal with this now. So I, I think I've got a number of speakers that are in option one territory, and I'm looking to see if I've got consensus for that. Go ahead.
I made a motion to get pre-budget approval of the purchase truck on the payment plan being seventy-nine a month for forty-eight months.
Okay, so I've got a motion coming forward that we act on option one, and I've got a seconder. Okay, I've got a seconder, and now we'll go to a little bit further discussion. You want it in?
I do. I, I just want to come back to staff again, and, and the question is, I think I'm pleading here, we really do need this truck?
Through, through, through the chair, yes.
Thank you.
You didn't qualify that in any way.
It was just yes.
Yes, I, I got it.
Yeah.
It was pretty affirmative.
That was pretty clear.
Okay, so I've got a motion on the floor. Go ahead.
I seconded already.
You seconded, yeah.
Through the chair to the CAO, or, or to, I guess to the CAO, last year we made a similar, we had a similar discussion with this in my mind, that, that we approved this, and it ended up not, not working. We ended up later on, I believe, authorizing the, the purchase, correct?
Through the chair, that, that is correct.
You did?
But, yes.
So what's to prevent a similar thing from happening again this year?
Through, through the chair, I, I would say that we're three months earlier in, in going after this than we were in 2019.
So once this pre-budget approval, if that happens tonight, that will allow the request to go out as soon as possible and get us in, involved in, in this instead of waiting until fall to act on.
That, that is, that is correct. We were late going out last year, and that, just wasn't available.
Oh, I see.
And, and so my only other question would be, where does that leave us if, if option one adds zero percent in a 2019 vehicle that suits our needs, falls through?
I, I would say through, through the chair, we, we would know relatively quick, and we would be back to, to council.
So the, if I may, through the chair, so the existing vehicle will get us through that time period to, to have it come back to us if option one falls through?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor right now is that we action option, option one. Go ahead.
One more, and maybe this is to the treasurer. If, if we action option number one, what would the, the amount taken off the one ninety-one, seven fifty-nine ultimately be?
I, I've got a couple of numbers through the chair, because I've got the library reduction, and then this lease, or this purchase reduction and a lease adding.
Okay, do you do the library first?
Yeah, I've already taken, taking the library off the one ninety-one.
Yeah.
And then taking away the thirty-five and adding in the, in the financing payments of the eight grand. We're, we're at four, one fifty-three is what I think we're at.
What, I think what the deputy mayor is looking for, I'm, I've got the one ninety-one in front of me.
Right.
What did I take off for the library?
Fifteen five.
Fifteen five came off.
Another thirty-five.
Then another thirty-five comes off.
But adding a roughly eight.
And adding roughly eight on.
Yeah, it's seven, nine, one, one, so.
And where am I at?
A one fifty-two is what I think we're at.
And then I'm at one fifty-two, roughly. Okay, does that answer your question?
Let me make sure. Oh, so one, one forty-nine, two fifty-nine, is that pretty close? Is that what you said? I saw her average.
Two fifty-two, she said.
I think everybody's dropping the, the last three zeros.
Yeah, probably.
One forty-nine, one seventy. All right, now can I call a question on this option one? Calling the question to action option one. Those in favor? All right, I have that carried. Now, I need another motion then, that option one be given pre-budget approval. We don't want to lose the fact that these twenty-nineties are running off the lots pretty fast, so I need a motion for pre-budget approval, looking for the motion for pre-budget approval. Sorry? Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, because I, I'm just, I'm just not tracking that. Okay, that's in the motion, so that's done. Now then, the issue that's outstanding is the eight thousand, that we've, we've taken thirty-five out of capital, but that dumped approximately eight thousand back onto operating. I'm going to recognize you in a minute.
Okay.
But before I go there, I'm going to say we have two choices here. And the two choices are to add eight thousand back onto our existing operational, recreation operational. That's one choice. There is another choice, dare I say it, and that is to challenge staff to find it in operations. They didn't like that one, did they? All right, discussion on, and I, and the chair has opened either, I'm interested to hear the discussion. Deputy Mayor, you're first.
Well, I'm not going into that one. I'm going back to the, I'm going back to the motion as it, as it was presented. The, the value that's presented that we're looking at in option one is, is, is based on forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars, and I'm assuming somebody's done a little research to come up with the number, forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. The number that we just took out was thirty-five thousand dollars, so if, if we're actually making a motion to, to do the truck, what's the, what's the actual dollar value going to be that we're, we're looking for for the motion? Is it going to be thirty-five thousand, or is it going to be forty-two, one ninety-two?
Well, one's expensive, it's, I don't understand the question.
It's just a lease agreement. It's the purchase price, we've generally set at eight seventy-nine to move to the forty-two.
Well, we're up. Yeah, here's.
Yeah.
Well, the, the original number, though, that's in the budget is thirty-five thousand, right? So we, we pull the thirty-five thousand out.
Yeah.
But, but the number we're basing pulling it out on is actually, is actually like, what, seven thousand dollars higher?
No, 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 there's no relationship, no, there's no relationship. We're just taking a thirty-five thousand dollar capital item and setting, taking it off completely, and we're adding, we're going to do the, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to action the purchase in a completely different way by entering into a finance agreement at seven thousand nine hundred a month. There's no relationship.
I'm just asking, not that we're going to try with capital, and now we're not going to do with capital.
That's right. So the, so the issue is, the issue is we've, we've increased the operational budget by eight thousand dollars. We either have to fund that or challenge staff to find it. You said you weren't going to go there, so if you're not going to go there, then we have to, we have to have a motion to increase the operational budget by seven thousand nine hundred, let's say eight thousand.
I'll make that one.
Okay, so I have Counselor Hunter making the motion that we increase the operation. Now, just through the CAO, through the treasurer, I want to make sure it goes on the right line item. What operational budget are we increasing here? Is it the recreation?
It would be eighty-one, the administrative, there's the vehicle repairs and everything's in that particular section, eighty-one, which is like administration.
Oh, that's administration, so it's, it's not, it's not PW Recreation Facilities?
No, it's recreation.
It's recreation, and under administration, as there's a, a department called eighty-one, which is recreation.
All right, so that's where we're going to put this eight thousand, right?
Right.
Okay, so I've got a motion from Counselor Hunter that we add eight thousand back in there. Does he have a second? Your seconding. Mover and a seconder, further discussion.
We're going to get them.
Further discussion, hearing none. Those in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley's hanging out here.
All right, go back and find the money.
All these, we've got a seven million dollar budget, can't get eight thousand bucks out of it.
I can get four.
Okay. Well, um, the, yeah, okay, I, I see your point, but I think that horse has gone from the barn. It's got to be quicker, there'll be other chances. All right, so that, did I call a question on that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's carried, all right. All right, so now we're back at the, we're back at our, our page nine of thirty-two.
Back to A?
We're back to A, we're back to A. Well, we're picking these up as we go along. I told you I was looking for the low hanging fruit. So the thirty-five is there, and it's gone. All right, we've still got a capital budget now that is, the treasurer helped me here, the capital budget is now one million, and we just took thirty-five off of it.
Yeah, so we're now at one million and eighty-eight thousand, one twenty-five.
One million, zero eight eight?
One two five.
One two five. So gentlemen, need your, I need your input here, where we're going from here. We have Cardinal Dox in for thirty, then the amounts that I'm talking about are all coming from, are all coming from taxation, current year taxation. I'm going to start at the top of the list and go down the list right from the top. We've got ten thousand dollars in there for drawings and plans to renovate upstairs of this building.
Are we stopping at each one for?
Only if I get stopped.
Okay, so on my list, I, I have that, and I have the. Okay, so on my list, I, I have that and I have the next item as both being removed.
All right, so now's your chance, make your pitch.
Uh, we had a discussion about, uh, fire hall drawings and, and the, um, the need for the fire hall drawings to, to move forward, and if they weren't going to move forward with, um, with something, then, then they could be put off, uh, again. So, uh, I see that the same should be done for the upstairs drawings, uh, the ten thousand dollars for the upstairs drawings, if we're not actually, uh, planning to do something with those drawings, then, then they can be put off until next year, until we are ready to do something with them.
Looking for further debate on that issue, on that item. Further debate, if any. Counselor Hunter, and then counselor.
I agree, I agree, uh, I know something needs to be done upstairs in time, but right now, in the budget restraints, and maybe more money comes available in another year, I'd see, growing, growing, uh, our minds might change by the time the money comes forward to do it, so.
Two speakers to remove it, further discussion?
Counselor. I, I would concur with, uh, both deputy mayor and counselor Hunter to remove, to remove that.
Three speakers. Any further speakers?
Isn't, isn't the issue whether, are we gonna do anything next year? I mean, if you're gonna, if the plan is to do some renovations next year, the drawings done issue. Late in the year, for that matter. But we, we've been talking about doing that for years now.
Yeah.
So either we're gonna do it, or we're not gonna do it. And so if we're not gonna do it, strike it off and let's forget about it. Otherwise, let's, you know...
I hate to say it, but I agree.
Get on with it.
Well, it's one of these things that comes up as a nice-to-have.
So then take it off, take the whole thing off, because we didn't, we're, we can't afford nice-to-have.
Okay, fair comment. I've got four speakers here, just about enough to convince me to...
I, I really don't wanna, I really don't wanna taxation on nice-to-have.
Okay? All right, do I have consensus to remove the, uh, drawing plans for the upstairs ten thousand from capital?
The stone fence, I would, I mean, we're talking that for years.
No, no, one at a time, I'm gonna deal with them one at a time here. Do I have consensus to deal with the, with the, with the upstairs, plans for the upstairs? Okay, I have consensus there, there's another ten off the capital item there. I know the treasurer's gonna keep track of this for me, so I've got another ten coming off here. All right, next item on the, uh, capital is the town hall stone fence. We heard the pitch as to why it needs repairs, and we have twenty-two thousand five hundred listed as a capital item, money coming from the current year taxation, the entire amount, and, uh, looking for speakers to that issue. That item, that issue, counselor Hunter.
Well, we spent a lot of money and we had, uh, a lot of money donated to us at the front of our town hall here with the, the mutual when they left. And bought back a, and put a antique fence back that disappeared, and we brought it back and put it up.
Oh, you've heard, oh, up, up there.
The stones it's sitting on are badly needed, appointed and, and fixing up. Looks bad in the front of our town, uh, town hall, we've gotta keep, spend all the money keeping the rest, I don't think twenty-two thousand here to fix that, because if you don't do it soon, we're gonna lose the forty thousand or so that we spent on the steel, getting it back and putting it up in one thing or another, so. It's a maintenance item that it can't be let go, or you're gonna end up paying a lot more money.
Okay, so you're seeing it as a, as a, not as a nice-to-have, it's a necessary?
Well, we're gonna keep the fence, there it is.
Okay. And it does destroy some of our property quite nicely?
You can't ask our neighbors to keep their property fixed up, but we don't keep those out of our property.
Is that, uh, is that a quotation, or is that just an estimate?
Through the CIO?
I'm sure.
Sorry?
Uh, sorry, I, I could probably speak to that, to the CIO. Um, from, from the previous CIO, I know that's an estimate that she got, a quotation mark, quotation to fix specifically. Not some years ago, most recently, she got.
Because that kinda work is highly labor-intensive, very labor-intensive. And I don't know if twenty-two grand is gonna do it.
No, but twenty-two grand gets us started, and we've got the estimate, so let's see where the estimate, let's, let's see where the twenty-two thousand takes us.
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm, I've got, uh, I, I'm sensing a, uh, I'm sensing a, a desire to keep this in, other speakers?
I'm one hundred percent taking it out.
You're one hundred percent taking it out?
If it can stay, uh, for another year, um, at twenty-five thousand dollars and, and still, still be fine, uh, I would much rather see that twenty-five thousand dollars going to, uh, to some...
Twenty-two five.
Whatever.
Okay, so I got two speakers one way and one the other, that's up to you two.
I, uh, I, I feel we have to sometime do this work. Um, I've been through the situation we had the fence, I was through the situation we lost the fence, and now we got it back and it's beautiful, um, and I, and I agree with counselor Hunter's comments, uh, as to the reason why. I'm not a hundred percent sold it has to be done this year, but it does have to be done.
Well, now come on, you can't waltz around here, you're talking the twenty-twenty budget. Or as we say, you can't suck and blow here.
Well, uh, okay, all right, here it is, take it out and bring it back next year.
See, and I feel that way, too.
Okay, now I've got two and two. Mr. D- counselor Dillabough.
We brought this up last year, is that right?
Yeah.
Did we?
Did we?
Yes.
When are we gonna do it?
Next year.
Twenty-twenty. Ser- ser- seriously. Come on.
Oh, hey, I, I mean, we, we have to put it off for two years, you're right, I mean, eventually it is gonna...
Certainly looking more every year. Certainly looking better.
It's gonna be down, yeah, and it, it'll fall over, and that cost us forty-five thousand.
Is there some kind of a grant out there that we might be able to, uh, tap into, to do this work?
Hey, guys, we're talking about twenty-two thousand dollars here to fix up in front of your place, if you had to fix up your, your house and somebody comes and says twenty-two thousand, would you be putting it off to wait until it cost you forty?
Well, we did it for four years, though. Well, I mean, this is a...
I did that and learned my lesson.
Jesus, so let's not kick the can, let's pick it up.
All right, so now I've got three saying, go ahead, get it done. I got three, one, two, three, four, I got four saying, get it done.
Well, the thing is, I, I, I agree, like, we've taken it down the road again, the price is gonna go up, you get a quotation, a firm price quote, I can guarantee it's gonna be worth twenty-five right now, because it's my experience, we did our church, okay? It was two hundred grand, now that's a big building, and parts of it are fault, that was not, not twelve, thirteen years ago, and parts of it are, need to be done again, highly labor, they were there for two summers, so the, this kind of work, to restore those, and, and we did the wall in front of it as well, this kind of work is, uh, as I mentioned, highly labor-intensive.
It would be thirty-seven.
Weather, weather, uh, impacted, et cetera, so, I don't know, I'd like to see an FQ on this, they'd say, okay.
Question?
You know, give it, go ahead, so that's why I'm saying keep it in the budget, because...
Okay, uh, okay, so you're speaking to keep it in, again, uh, you want to back in again?
I just, I just wanna ask staff, uh, on this, on, on this twenty-two five, is this from the same person that re-pointed our building here a few years ago? Or is this a different, is this a different quote?
Do you know the source of the quote?
I don't have a three percent tax issue. It's Hubbard? The, the, the code is from Hubbard and Company.
Thank you, okay, okay.
All right. Uh, go ahead. Keep going.
I'll leave it in.
I think I'm getting consensus here that this remains in, uh, an, an item on the capital list. Do I have consensus, I like to see a nodding of heads, do I have consensus to leave this? Okay, I have a consensus, this stays on the capital list. All right, so now, uh, the treasurer will tell me I'm at about one thirty-nine, one seventy, is that correct?
You are correct.
Uh, I forgot to mention as we started this, that, uh, we do have the option of raising additional tax money. If I wanna raise that whole hundred and thirty-nine, what, where do I, what, what does this get me to? The reason I'm saying that is because this is getting to be painful.
He's giving in.
It's gonna be very painful.
Well...
It's only the beginning.
It's only the beginning.
That's a two-point-four percent increase.
All right, gentlemen, I'm going down the list, you've heard the lady. Um, now I'm at fire department capital, I think we've chewed this one over pretty, uh, extensively at the last budget meeting, we have twenty thousand dollars in for station two, additional studies, we have a hundred and seventy-four thousand six thirty in for the rescue, replacing a rescue truck, which has been given pre-budget approval, and we have sixteen six nine ninety-five in to replace a cutter, but wasn't, didn't, didn't I see someplace that there was a grant or something to replace that cutter? Or, or I got, I got it confused with something else, through the CIO, to the chief.
Thank, thank you, chief?
Uh, yes, through the chair, it, uh, the, the grant we received was for hydraulic ram.
Okay.
Generally, there's three tools in the Johnson life, there's a cutter, a spreader, and a hydraulic ram.
Okay.
So we, we purchased the ram, uh, we, sorry, we got the ram as the, the grant, and we have, we purchased the spreader the year before, so this is the last tool that needs to be replaced.
Okay, all right, so that's the sixteen nine ninety-five. All right, gentlemen, looking for discussion on these three items? No, the twenty we beat up, I mean, we're gonna go with that, right?
I, I would leave it all.
Everything stays, you have consensus, everything stays?
Yeah.
The chief can relax. I'm going down now to storm water management, Cardinal drainage around the arena, there's a thirty-eight thousand dollar, uh, line item in here to correct that ditch, if I recall correctly, it's something like a eight-inch pipe that flows into a catch basin with a six-inch pipe flowing out, which doesn't seem to work sometimes.
Magic.
Magic. So that's the issue, thirty-eight thousand is the cost. Now, what the, what the budget line, or what the briefing note didn't tell us was, and I, I'm, I'm gonna go to the CIO about this to try to refresh my memory as to the scope of this work, does the scope of this work include also, uh, additional parking on the west side there?
Well, I, I, I will defer to their own superintending.
Yes, sir.
It does, okay, so, we not only correct the eight-inch pipe throwing into the six-inch pipe, but we gain some additional parking, uh, at the arena, on the west side of the arena. Do I get a, a, a nodding of heads that this item remains in the budget?
I, I, yes, I, I also believe that there was a flooding issue with a neighbor.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
I think Mr. Mayor would love to get that fixed, wouldn't he, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it would stop the calls. All right, uh, but I, I understand, I di- I don't wanna be facetious about it, I mean, the, the gentleman that's calling me is, is quite concerned about the flooding on his property, and I don't blame him.
No.
Okay, so that item remains in, and now I'm down at the seventy-five thousand dollar item for Johnstown drainage, and again, uh, just to get a refresher, the Johnstown drainage, as I understand it, was mostly engineering, is that correctly, or, or am I... No, it seems to me I remember that the discussion included not just engineering, but some actual work on the ground, is that correct?
Uh, that is, that is correct.
All right, so discussion on that item. Stays in, no appetite to take it out?
I don't touch it.
All right, that item stays in, no problem, and we're down to the next item, which is replacing a truck, we've dealt with that one, and now we're down to Cardinal docks, there's a thirty thousand dollar item in the budget for docks at Cardinal, discussion on that item. Nobody wants to take, nobody's taking it out?
We, we need the, we need, we need the docks.
I'm touching it, just make a check mark there beside that, Mr. Mayor.
Heavily used.
Heavily used.
Heavily used, the abuse we got last year.
Okay, let's not go there.
Let's just put a check mark there.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll put the checkmark and move on, counselor.
Thank you.
All right, and so now I'm at the, uh, Cardinal pool filtration system, we took that out, that's gone, Cardinal arena lighting, a thirty-six thousand five hundred dollar item to replace the lighting in the Cardinal arena, discussion on that item.
Jesus.
What was that again, counselor?
We, uh, due to chair to, to the, to the facility manager, we can't give another year out of that?
Uh, through the chair, it's just as painful for me to sit here and, and discuss the item, to be quite honest with you, since it's only a six-year-old facility, but, um, we currently have one light that's blown out, um, and we have one fixture left, so after this one gets replaced, if any of them go in the next year, then we do not have a replacement for them. Um, it's the same issue that we had at the Spenceville Arena, and we replaced the ones in Spenceville last year with the new LED lights, again, it's, it's unfortunate, um, but the ones that were chosen when we, uh, built the arena, uh, are no longer available, and we have looked at various resources trying to find, uh, replacements, and we aren't able to do that, so it's not something that I wanna do, but it's something that we have to do.
Gentlemen, you've heard, you've heard the pitch? I'm looking for discussion, up or down?
Let's move ahead here, we're at two-point-four percent tax increase, narrow, we're, we're sitting the same thing we did here last year, trying to get to zero percent tax increase, then if you're the same thing next year, trying to bring up money to...
Uh, don't get me off, don't get me off base, I'm just dealing with this item.
Two-point-four percent's a pretty easy tax increase here.
No, that's two-point-four additional over where we were when we walked in.
It's a two-point-four tax. It is two, that would, that, to, to bring us balanced, we would, we would be two-point-four percent tax rate increase.
Okay, all right, uh, all, all in, all said, all done?
All in, all said, all done.
Okay, I get your point, fair enough. One more before I hit on that, then I'm gonna leave you alone, Mr. Mayor.
I, I think we have to do our due diligence.
So do I.
That's what we're, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, I agree.
The people of this township elected you guys to do that.
That's rough, don't be harsh.
Yeah, it is rough, but that's bloody well what the job is.
I agree.
And so what are you saying?
We don't, I'm not rolling over on two-point-four, if it's two-point-two, it can be two-point-two, if it's three, it can be three, but I'm not rolling over like that, that's caving in.
In other words, further discussion?
You're damn right.
Okay, well, we'll see how far that, 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 we'll see how far that discussion takes us, but I get the definite feeling that the arena lighting is staying. Do I have a consensus that the arena lighting is staying?
I think it has to.
Okay, the arena lighting is staying, and that stays in. Now, I've got, the next item on my list is the Cardinal Arena dehumidifier, which is gone, and the next item is the South Center stolen fridge, a replacement, and I think we all know about that one, and that is a nine thousand five hundred dollar item, barely, barely capital, but I guess it does make the, uh, I guess it does make the cut.
Well, it's ten thousand dollars, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's nine-five, I think our threshold...
So, so, so through the chair, I, I, I was in error, uh, last night, our capital threshold is five.
Oh, our capital threshold is five.
The, the treasurer kindly corrected me today, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank, thanks for the, uh, thanks for bringing us up today, because in my head, I was wondering today, all right, so discussion on that item? Yes?
Well, I, well, I, well, I support having it in the budget, I just wanna bring up, uh, last night's, uh, budget approval for the port, and, and it was said that when the South Center wants to replace, uh, some things at the South Cent- oh, no, it's, yeah, it's capital items only.
Yeah.
Um, that this would be something that would qualify, uh, for a portion of that, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars that, that they're, uh, that they have available, so, so while I, I would like to see it in here, uh, before the money gets spent elsewhere, I would like to see them at least apply, uh, for that ninety-five hundred dollars, uh, from the port.
Oh, now we're, now we're getting into last night's discussion, I was wondering how long it was gonna take before that came off. And, and...
They specifically said that, that it was for, for things like that, and, and that it was capital only, and, I mean, that's a, a perfect thing, perfect example.
And they also mentioned several, yeah, that's...
Counselor Dillabough wants in here?
I'd like to, uh...
I'd like to, uh, thank you, through the chair, to the facility manager. What is wrong with the fridge and stove?
Through the chair, um, for the last couple of years, we, we've had some minor repairs, um, and each time that we have had the repair company in, they've indicated. The stove itself, um, the, the oven works and the burners work, but the grill that's beside it does not work and has not worked for six or seven years. So the idea would be to get one a little bit smaller that would not even have the grill with it. So, it would give us a little bit more room in the kitchen as well. They are, the stove system that's in there right now is, I've been with the township for twenty-seven years, and it's been there the whole time.
Is it, is it natural gas?
It's natural gas, yes it is.
Yeah.
And we do maintenance on it, and, um, we have had, uh, again, small, small repairs. Um, but there's gonna come a time when we may not be able to fix it, and then we're left not being able to use it for some of our functions. So, you know, could we wait until it breaks down? Sure, but then we could be six weeks to six months to get a replacement for it.
But we had minor repairs for the last two years. Oven works. All the burners work. I was in there the other day. It worked, they worked good. So the grill isn't, well, it never worked for seven years.
That's correct.
So, okay, so I'd say the stove's good. So what about the fridge?
Fridge is the same thing. It's, it's an older fridge. It is, uh, twenty-two years old. Um, so, let alone the repairs to fix it, but we also, if we get a new one, it'll definitely be cost effective from energy costs as well.
Is that, is that natural or electric?
That's electric.
It is, eh?
So we have two different, uh, two different items here, two different issues really, because as we heard from last night's port meeting, this particular budget item, this pair, would definitely qualify under that new program that was approved by the committee, but has not yet been approved by council.
True.
Uh, but, um.
What, what would not be possible, leaving it in the budget, and then when you guys get around to doing all that other stuff that was discussed last night, that you can pull it out of the budget?
Well, budget doesn't have to be spent, as we.
Go to reserves.
Okay, well, let me, let me just go through the sequence here as I understand it. Uh, so through the CIO to the clerk then. My understanding is that the recommendations that were adopted at, or that the committee made last night to come to council will come to council on Monday night.
Correct.
All right, so if council approves the recommendations that came forward from last night's meeting, then that seventy-five thousand dollar capital projects, uh, fund will be, in fact, available. All right, then the only thing we have to worry about is making sure that everybody has access to it, equal access to it, uh, which I think is a question, just, it's just a question of communication. We'll get that, we'll have to make sure that that gets actioned properly. Uh, and, uh, so my question goes the opposite way. What would be wrong with taking this out for now, and we will know by budget meeting number five, uh, whether or not it, that, that, that fund is going to exist or not. We should, I think, be able to make a few assumptions if the fund exists. So, will we take it out for now?
So, so.
And assume that it comes from a different source. Go ahead.
So, so through the chair.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken from last night, that the, the port committee still has to, uh, make the design criteria.
Yeah.
Et, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay.
Might, might, might I suggest just the opposite, that it's, that it stays in, and if successful, then that gets placed into reserves.
Okay, fair enough. Everybody agree with that approach?
Yes.
Okay, all right. You have a question?
Just, just a little bit further discussion, uh, to, uh, through, through the chair to, uh, our facilities manager. Um, like the, there's certain times or situations where we rent that hall to people that wanna do baking or cooking or things like that. Is, is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct.
And is there a fee charged for that?
It's included in the cost of the hall rental.
Okay, okay. I mean, even if they don't rent the hall, they just wanna do some baking or something like that.
There is a fee for that.
There is, thank you. That's, thank, thank you. Okay.
All right, so I have consensus to leave the South Center Stoven Fridge in the budget. It stays. And now I'm down under Public Works, and, uh, the brush head for the high hole has been removed. There's a Kubota mower head showing up at twenty-four thousand. Discussion if any. No appetites to take it out, so I have consensus to leave it in. Okay, that stays. And now I'm down to purchase two electronic signboards. They, uh, went out on an earlier discussion. And now I'm at replace a Ford one and a half ton dump plow truck at ninety-five thousand. The entire ninety-five thousand to come from taxation current year. Uh, discussion if any on this item? No discussion? Go ahead.
There's a discussion on, on, we're, we're over these, why we're replacing them and stuff, mainly that ninety-five thousand dollar one's gonna get rid of two trucks. And that one instead of two. And the two seventies replaced, and the truck that's costing us a lot of money for repairs. Only thing I'd like to see, I'd like to see that they definitely stay in, but I'd like to see pre-budget approval given for them, so we can get out to tender. These plow trucks will be available in the fall of the year when we, we need them, because we know there's anywhere from nine months to a year delivery time on these, and the quicker we get out to tender, probably the better we're gonna get on them, and we're gonna have them, we're gonna get rid of these trucks before we end up next fall having a stove storm and spending a whole bunch of money on their tires on them before we get rid of them.
Okay, so two, you're, you're bringing up two items. Number one, they should stay, and number two, they should be given pre-budget approval. Uh, so I'm looking for consensus around, first of all, whether they survive or not, and then I'll come back to the pre-budget approval issue. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, just for clarification, through the chair to, to Mr. Guest, which, it's truck five that's coming out, correct?
Truck three.
Five is staying in.
Five is staying in?
Yeah.
Uh, so, sorry, so when I'm looking at the ninety-five and the two seventy, which one is the Ford one and a half ton dump plow truck?
That would be truck eleven.
That's T eleven. And then the tandem axle plow truck replaces the two thousand and five international. What's, what's the name of the two thousand and five international?
T three.
T three. All right.
So it's, it's T, it's T three that's coming out, and, and T eleven that, that's coming out?
Yeah.
Correct. T one stays in?
Yeah.
T five stays in? And T four stays in?
T four was just replaced last year.
So T four is, is on our list, but.
Just for comparison.
Just for that, okay.
Okay, so I'm back to, I'm back to this, these two items, ninety-five thousand dollar purchase and a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar purchase. I'm, I'm getting, I'm feeling consensus that they stay in the budget.
Hundred percent.
All right, so I'm, I'm, I'm saying that we have consensus that they remain. Now I'd like to deal with Counselor Hunter's issue that they be, that, that the purchase of those two items be given pre-budget approval to get these orders in now. Um, Counselor Hunter, are you making that as a motion?
I am.
That these two items be given pre-budget approval, and, uh, staff be authorized that to, uh, purchase and execute. Well, according to, under, under our procurement policy. And you're seconding?
I'll second.
Deputy Mayor is seconding. Further discussion on the pre-budget approval issue? Hearing none. About, can, can there be a question?
Can those trucks be financed?
Oh, we're not, we haven't looked at that. I don't wanna bring it up at this point.
Okay.
This is budget meeting number four. Uh.
Voting.
You're voting. Abose in favor?
Aye.
Motion is, is, the motion is carried. All right, so the, the, uh, the clerk will have captured that. Here in a minute, the treasurer's got it down, and I'm sure Mr. Guest will have it written indelibly in the back of his head.
Oh, no, it's right on my glasses.
You look at the windshield and you see it.
All right. Now I'm moving on.
Where are we at?
I'm at Bridges and Culverts, and the Ventnor Bridge is staying in. It's, uh, the Vent, Ventnor Bridge will be financed from the gas tax fund, government grants and gas tax funds. Has no implications for current year taxation, but we do have something called the Riley Street Retaining Mall. A two thou, a twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar item financed totally from current year fin, uh, current year taxation. Discussion if any?
Have to do it.
Have to do it.
We've had this, we've had this before.
Yep.
And it works.
We beat, beat the bush.
Okay, I have consensus then. I think to let, that that remains in. Everybody comfortable? Go to centers. I'm going on. All right, now I'm at gravel to surface treatment roads. Latimer Road is a joint project with the Township of North Grenville. Hundred and two thousand dollar item, again, being financed by government grants and the gas tax fund. No implications for current year taxation. Three items for current year taxation. Miller Road West, gone. Chambers Road, two thousand, two hundred and four thousand, gone, and Coopman Road, sixteen thousand two fifty, gone. So those are out. Now I'm down at resurfacing roads. Blair Road South, no, no implication for ta, current year taxation. Hudson Crescent, no implication for current year taxation, financed by government grants and the gas tax fund. Judy Place, a nineteen thousand dollar item financed from current year taxation. Now, Ventnor Road, uh, an additional thirty-five hundred dollars from current year taxation, and Safford Road, an additional sixteen thousand from current year taxation. Those roads are financed with a combination of gas tax, government grant, and current year taxation. Now, I, I wanna deal with, say again?
Did you forget the two hundred thousand on Rooney Road, Jordan and Cedar?
Uh, yes, I did. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, but we'll deal with these resurfaces right now. Uh, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'd like to deal with them now, and then we'll go back to the, to the Jordan Road.
Not touching them.
Not touching them.
Not me.
Not touching them. I have that feeling as well, counselor?
Well, I really need to be in there, but I just have a question on the, on the Ventnor Road at two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred. This is one of the heaviest-used road, agriculture roads in the township for two sixty-three. What are we doing on this road? Are we rebuilding the base and widening the shoulders on it? The reason this road gets damaged so bad is the surface top of it isn't wide enough for the width of the farmer, heavy farmer equipment that's traveling. And we're gonna widen the shoulders out here and widen the pavement out when we do it, so we're not running off the edge of the pavement all the time?
Through the chair to the CIO.
Through the road two?
Through the chair, um, this will be similar to what we did on Pittston Road, and we did widen out the shoulders there. Um, and we provided, provided, uh, extra width in, in asphalt, not very much. Um, but we did get, uh, uh, some extra shoulder width and some extra, um, pavement width. The, we were trying to figure out what the width was today. And, uh, every time we turned around, somebody's, one of, one of the farm, farmers has bought a brand-new wider piece of equipment. And, uh, when I passed the other day, I had to get off into a driveway. I don't know how wide to make these roads. We are meeting the standard for the road pavement width, and we have, we have more work to do on this road to beef up the shoulders. But, um, it, it would be very similar to what we did on Pittston Road last year.
So, so the question becomes how wide do we make them? What's the standard width?
We, we're a standard, the design is the standard, which, which is a, uh, three point three to three point five lanes. And we're, and, uh, so six, is six, uh, uh, six, six point six to seven meter, uh, pavement, and, and, um, a meter, uh, of, uh, shoulder width on each side.
So we're going beyond the standard? We didn't, we went beyond the standard on Pittston?
No, no, that is the, I, what I stated was the, was the standard that we have to meet for our roads with that, that kind of traffic volume. And, and, uh, um, so, so a, a seven meter width of, of asphalt and a meter width.
Oh.
On each side of, uh, for, for shoulders.
So total nine meters paved?
Total nine meters, no, seven meters paved and two meters gravel shoulder.
Oh.
So, if I pave the shoulders, then we have to, we have to support that shoulder even more, because it's got pavement on it, and that's expensive. If, if I, um, what we try to do is widen the platform, which is what the road sits on, and, and build, build the road to a width that, that will support the traffic that's using it. Unfortunately, the farm implements keep getting bigger and bigger, and, um, I think, I'm not sure which one it was, but it was on Ventnor Road. I had to pull over into a driveway that let upon by and by.
Uh, can you tell us a little bit more about the treatment there? Lots of hot mixed tulips?
This is all hot mixed pavement on it.
And, uh, and re, and re, uh, correcting any base problems as well?
Same as Pittston Road, we correct the base problems. We, we, um, we pulverize the asphalt, use it in the granulars that, um, to help support, help the granulars. Uh, we're using place between two, three, sometimes four, depending on, if you've got a sag section of, of new granulars. So, uh, I just, I, we're working within the standards for this type of road system, so.
And just helping with one more thing. It's, uh, what is the length here? Is it from the bridge east to twenty-two?
No, it, it will go to, uh, it, it'll go from the bridge east, I think it's one point five.
East one point five?
Probably around the, there's the Henderson Farms and the.
Okay, so it's not the full length east of the ridge?
No, no, it just takes us halfway down.
So, counselor, does that answer your question?
Well, I don't really answer it, because whatever that, that, uh, that meter of width on that road down.
You'll have to build it. Like, I have to support that, so yes, I, I do have to widen it, but.
Yeah, like I say, you gotta, you're gonna have to widen the shoulders up considerably to, to support the road. Uh, seven meter of asphalt on, on there.
So we don't fill available from that one.
I just, I don't wanna, I wanna see the road fixed, but I don't wanna, wanna see it fixed. Could Ventnor Road, for, we must have been around council for a while, has a history. This is about the third time that that road's been fixed, so. I don't wanna see us back in four years doing the same thing over again, because it was paved, it was dug up, it was paved again, it was dug up again, and, and fixed, and the, the base has never been properly built up to maintain the, the load width, load bearing that travels on that road, so.
It, it definitely is gonna be a challenge, but we are, are going to get a wider platform to, to put our standard road on.
Okay, you want it in, so you're not arguing to get it out?
I'm not arguing to get it out. I'm just.
Yeah, I know, you're arguing for, yeah. Well, again, uh, if it stays in, there can be additional discussion, uh, with the staff between now and the time we execute on the program or execute on the project, uh, where we can ask staff for, uh, a further definition of design criteria, et cetera. Okay, so I'm getting the impression that these all survive? Uh, is that correct? Okay, all right.
Except for the first item.
Say again?
Except for the first item on the list.
Uh, which was Blair Road?
Drawings for upstairs.
Oh, no, no, I'm just, I'm just concluding the resurfacing.
You're in Public Works only.
Yeah. So now I'm going to go back to the item just above that, which is engineering and survey costs. Uh, and we were talking originally about engineering and survey costs for Rooney, Jordan, and Cedar. At, uh, I think we were originally talking at four hundred thousand, uh, but it's. At, uh, I think we were originally talking at four hundred thousand, uh, but it's now been reduced to two hundred thousand.
Just for Cedar Grove Road, I think.
And, yes, it's been, it's been reduced to two hundred thousand, and the scope has been reduced to Cedar Grove Road. So, uh, looking for discussion on that item. Sorry, uh, I'll recognize the C A O first, and then over to you.
I, I think Mr. Bradley and I are probably saying the same, same point, that, that Cedar Grove Road engineering does come up under, uh, six G. It has a little bit more information.
Okay, under six G? So can you give me the page reference?
I, I believe it's twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? Let's turn our, turn our attention there and see what additional information the staff brought, or never reading it. Remember what it said. At budget meeting number two, committee reduced the original capital amount from four hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, and directed staff to focus on the Cedar Grove Road section. This anticipate, this is anticipated to be a multi-year project. Staff is recommending that a hundred thousand be set aside to perform topographic survey, geotechnical subsurface investigation, preparation of drawings sufficient for utility circulation and engagement. The dollar value proposed is based on smaller length projects. Uh, okay, the work we did on John Tiger Boulevard, Newport Drive, and James Street that required a similar scope of work. Committee should consider directing the remaining hundred thousand toward asphalt patching or placing into reserves. So what you're suggesting is that this be reduced to a hundred thousand, and the other hundred thousand be directed into reserves or patching?
That's correct.
Okay, can we have discussion on that? There's, it's not in the form of recommendation, although I'm gonna take it that way. Um, I'm gonna take the paragraph that says, committee should consider directing the remaining hundred thousand toward asphalt patching and/or placed in reserves. I'm gonna take that as being the, the actionable recommendation. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, I would concur that this, uh, we should do this, as long as we're gonna, this, this road will be affected by the job site challenge, right? So, as long as the hundred thousand and the studies that we're gonna do, uh, for that hundred thousand, uh, puts us in a position where we don't have to spend additional money to get to the qualification for the job, right? The job site challenge.
Yeah, well, I mean, the deadline for that is March the thirty-first, this work will be done.
No, no, I know, I'm just thinking from the budget.
Yeah, okay, um, so there's an interesting recommendation here. Hundred thousand would come out of capital, and a hundred thousand would either go into reserves or into asphalt patching. Counselor Hunter?
I'd like to see the hundred thousand go over, over into our reserves, and then if, uh, some of these road projects such as Ventnor doesn't come in on what their budget is here, here when they find out that we have the money set aside in reserves, that we can still go ahead and do this, these projects. And with the winter we've had this year, there may be some considerable patching that we might have to do. I wouldn't want to see us go ahead and put forty thousand in budget for it, but have the hundred thousand set in the reserve. We could come back and, and have it there available, but we had to use it.
Okay, so through the C A O to the treasurer, which reserve would that hundred thousand go into?
Um, I would suggest it go into the public works reserve, be- because it would, if, if, uh, based on Counselor Hunter's conversation, and either patching or, or roads that hundred, the hundred thousand was best set into the public works reserve.
Okay, so I'm, 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 I'm not sensing any, um, disagreement with the recommendation that we're having it, that we have in front of us. Uh, does anyone wish to speak to this? Anyone else wish to speak, you can speak to this?
I know nobody wants to go backwards, but I, I wanted to go back to Latimer Road for
Well?
at, at some point.
Yeah, at some point, but
I don't to this, I have no problem with this.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this one first.
Yep. That's why I was asking.
Okay, uh, all right. So, what I need here now then is a motion or, or a recommendation, mover and a seconder to, um, to approve this recommendation. I'm gonna take it all the way from the top, actually, right from Rooney and, right down to the end here. Looking for a mover and a seconder, I have Mr. Bradley moving. Do, do I have a seconder?
Yes, you do.
I have Counselor Cameron seconding. So, just for the clerk, we're gonna use the entire wording that's in the briefing note, right to the end here. Those in favor of the recommendation? Recommendation is carried. All right, now, you wanted to go back to Latimer?
Just, just for, for a second, and I know it has no direct, uh, implication on, on amount of taxation, but it is a hundred and two thousand dollars from gas tax money. We've, we've removed, uh, Miller's Chambers Coopman, uh, because the product that's getting used is an inferior. Uh, and it was suggested by our, our roads superintendent that we do so. Um, I struggle to think that, that that hundred and two thousand dollars that could go towards the reserves, or could, or could go towards Rooney, Rooney, Jordan, and Cedar Grove Road is going to get spent without one hundred percent certainty, uh, that it isn't an inferior product that's going on the road, and I, I haven't heard that yet.
Okay, so just in context, remembering that this is basically a North Grenville project. Uh, we're not lead on it, they're lead, but because it's a boundary road, we're in for half, right?
You're right.
Okay, so can you answer the, the deputy mayor's concerns?
If, if, if I, if I, if I may, through, through, through the chair, uh, I don't believe there is such thing as a one hundred percent guarantee of, of any product, you know, standing up all, all the time. We, certainly with, with our last round of the, of the double surface treatment, it did not, uh, pan out as desired. But I believe the roads superintendent has indicated that, uh, that, uh, North Grenville does an additional micro-surfacing on there, and, and have had some success with respect to that road. And that this was one of those trial, um, cases, uh, in, in that respect, to see if that is possibly a, a viable option moving forward.
So, I'm gonna insert a question in here, and then we'll come back to deputy mayor. So this, our share of this is a hundred and two thousand, which means the scope, the, the total project is a two hundred and four thousand dollar project. That's not gonna do the entire length of Latimer Road, I don't think. What is? Oh, my goodness. It's not a heavily traveled road, uh, but it is the full length of it, right? From forty-four to the boundary. Dundas Boundary.
From twenty-two to the boundary, yes.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, so I guess we still have the issue of, and I know your point, that there's never any guarantees, but how do we, how do we, how do we deal with this? I don't know how to deal with it. I mean
Hundred and two thousand dollar trial sounds, uh, kind of expensive based on, on the fact that we, we just took the other three out because they were seen as inferior. So, uh, while I respect what, what the C A O is saying and, and suggesting that they're using a different product, uh, he did also state that it was a trial. Um, and, and to me, when we're, we're going through this the way we're going through it, it seems to be a rather expensive trial. Uh, and even though it's gas tax money, uh, it, it's still, it's still money, so.
Go ahead?
Um, yeah, uh, through, through the chair to, uh, staff. I believe, uh, I believe the person I want to answer this is the fire chief. Was it not last year on Latimer Road where we had a fire incident where there was a problem getting to the house? Now, was that problem due to the road or due to the driveway? Do you recall that, chief?
Through the chair, I do recall that, and I believe that was a driveway issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right, so I think what we can do at this point is, uh, the deputy mayor has made his issues known. I guess it all comes down, not only to product, but execution and application. So, I guess, I guess what I would say is, in just in summarizing, and I share his concerns, uh, in summarizing, I guess what I would say is that there's a certain amount of pressure on staff to make sure that the application is, uh, properly applied, and that, you know, we get some extended lifespan out of this. It is a, it is a gravel to surface treatment, treatment. Latimer Road doesn't get a lot of heavy traffic, so it really should stand. Um, all right, now where am I? Back to the treasurer to see where I am. So, to the treasurer, I, I had a hundred thousand coming out of capital, which reduced my capital from one thirty-nine to thirty-nine, but I took a hundred of that and put it back into a reserve account, so I'm still looking for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
That is correct. We're back to the same amount as we were ten minutes ago.
But I think the point, I think, I think Mr. Bradley's point is well taken. We have done our due diligence, we've gone through this extensively, we've, we've reviewed the scope of the work on these projects. We've questioned staff about the effectiveness and the efficiency of the expenditures of dollars. Uh, we've done our, we've done our work to get where we are. Now, I'm going to introduce another item. And the item I'm going to introduce is that at last night's court meeting, we saw that the recommendation came forward that the port would increase its, uh, annual contribution to, uh, to the township in an amount of, I think it's eleven thousand three seventy-five. Now, so to the treasurer, have you taken into account, uh, that additional revenue at any place prior to tonight's meeting?
No, I have not.
Okay, all right. So, provided that the recommendations from last night's meeting are adopted by council at Monday night's meeting, we will have an additional eleven thousand three seventy-five in revenue from that source. Now I'm still looking for a hundred grand.
Twenty-seven nine, twenty-seven nine.
Hundred and twenty-seven nine. All right, so if I need a hundred and twenty-seven nine, what's the implication on the, what, what is the, what is the tax rate implication to raise a hundred and twenty-seven nine hundred thousand? Be a little bit less than two point four, should be around two.
Could I be so bold as to say that eleven thousand dollars would be well served to be put into a reserves based on the amount of money that was pulled out in twenty nineteen?
Well, uh, I wouldn't consider that being bold, I consider that doing your job. At the risk of being bold.
Two point two two.
But you know, you, you, you do make an excellent point.
Two point two two.
Two point two two.
Two two.
Two point two two.
Two point two two.
What was the, uh, dollar amount?
One twenty-seven nine.
One twenty-seven.
All right. Now, I'm gonna go back through my agenda package here to see that, have we, have we done everything that we should have done here? Have we covered all of the, uh, we've reviewed the winter control? Did we put additional money into winter control yet? Did we?
Well, we have
Yeah, it's item E. Uh, I'm trying to remember where we are at winter control. Um, we talked about ending, when we end nineteen, we should have twenty thousand in winter control. And we talked about putting in an additional twenty and additional twenty to bring it up to sixty. Have we done that?
Yes.
All right, so Counselor Hunter, that puts, uh, twenty, sixty thousand in that reserve. Have we added the money, uh, as it pertains to the operation? And I guess, don't I have a briefing note on that someplace here?
You do.
Where is it? Page twenty-two? Page twenty-two?
Page twenty-two, thirty-two, yes.
So my twenty-twenty budget is at eighty-six thousand four seventy-eight for the labor and salt sand materials. That's not the total winter control budget, is it? That's just the two, those two major components.
So, so, so if, if I may through the chair, yes, so the, uh, on page twenty-two, this is just a comparison of, uh, of, uh, labor, salt and sand materials used in twenty nineteen for that month versus what we've used i- in, in twenty-twenty. So we've used about thirteen thousand six hundred, uh, dollars less, uh, in, in, in January over January. If you, if you look at page twenty-three of thirty-two, th- this is where the treasurer typically does her five-year average and, and trends, and it, it sort of shows that five-year average with respect to, to labor at, at seventy-six thousand two hundred. And for the, for the twenty-twenty draft budget, we, we put in labor at ninety thousand. The five-year average for, uh, machine rentals, external sidewalks is, is about twen- almost twenty-one thousand. We placed twenty-two thousand in miscellaneous. Uh, at a big forty-one hundred for the five-year average, we placed four thousand. Uh, salt and sand materials, the average was, uh, around, uh, a hundred and sixty-three thousand. We placed in a hundred and sixty-two thousand. And for machine rental external, it's around forty-two hundred, we placed six thousand. So, uh, with, with the, with the twenty-twenty draft, uh, operating budget, we think that we, we've, we've, we've covered that amount and, and, and are comfortable that, uh, if, if there would need to be any, any draw, it would be very minimal from the winter control reserve.
Okay, so before we get into discussion, I just want to clarify a couple things. So I, I see that two eighty-four, and I understand where it came from. But now I, I wanna go back to page fifteen of thirty-two. And when I go back to page fifteen of thirty-two, which is the, uh, expense listings, and I've, and I go to winter control, and I go across winter control, I see a proposed twenty-twenty budget of three twenty-four. So how do I square those two numbers? Forty thousand dollar difference there.
Page fifteen.
I'm on page fifteen of thirty-two, and I'm comparing that with twenty-three of thirty-two.
Can you just give us just a, just a minute, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Does everybody see what I'm looking at?
Yes, yes.
You said what page, uh, sorry?
So, so I'm comparing twenty-three of thirty-two, which shows winter control at two eighty-four, with fifteen of thirty-two, which shows winter control at three twenty-four.
The, the difference would be the transfer into reserves of forty thousand dollars.
Yes, there's forty thousand difference, you're correct. And what's the difference then?
The transfer into reserves for this year's budget is forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so, but
So that's what's the difference between the two eighty-four and the operating costs?
Oh, so what you're saying is that we put the three, we put the forty into the operating and then transfer it?
No, 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 under operating, there is a line item under the operating winter control called transfer to
Oh, that's correct.
Because it's a, it's a operating reserve, not a capital reserve.
Right, fair enough.
So the difference between the two eighty-four and the, and the three twenty-four that's shown in that is the forty thousand dollars.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
Okay, deputy mayor?
The, um, uh, through the chair to, to Melanie. Uh, thank you, uh, first. I, I love seeing the, uh, the five-year averages, I, I think that's awesome. The only thing that, that, for clarification, I think I already know the answer, but, um, uh, this year's, the twenty-twenty is obviously only up to now for most recent, right? Like the, uh, the two sixty-eight, is that, is that where we're at right now, or is that what the budget for the year originally was? Under the twenty, or is that?
Oh, so the, the, I think you're looking at the five-year average?
You're looking at the five-year average.
So that's the five, the five-year average.
That's right.
And so that's the full year, not to, like, to the same point in the year, each year, that's the full year end number, right? Okay, that was the only, the only thing, thank, uh, and again, thank you for that, I, it's great.
All right, so that's a review of the winter control budget and the winter control reserve. Now, I'd like to go to six... I would go to six, yeah, well, we're making progress.
Maybe, Mr. Chair, if you could actually, you know, just read the, read the item off, that might be better, because we, we, we did do the amended agenda, so, so get some confusion with
In other words, read the agenda off as to where I am?
Where, where you are, yes, if, if you wanna If, if you want to.
Just to be honest, I'm a little bit lost.
So, so, so I guess if I, if I, if I may help, maybe we should, uh, review Cardinal Ingredion Arena. It was one of the items that you wanted to review, the twenty-nineteen building supply and repair costs.
Right. Let's go there. And what is the page reference on that?
If you could, turn to page seventeen.
Alright, I'm on seventeen now.
So the Treasurer and the Facilities Manager has done a great job breaking tho- those items out and down for you.
So, that's, I think, what we were looking for?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. Now, does anybody have any comments here? And, and the Treasurer has provided, indicated that to provide a more comprehensive accounting of these costs, the following accounts can be set up in the chart of accounts. And, and she's indicated that she can do that for twenty-twenty. Now, my only question is the top of the next page, paragraph at the top of the next page. The twenty-twenty draft budget will include these additional accounts. So she's setting up three additional accounts. The current budget of twenty thousand will need to be increased to twenty-two thousand and divided according to a five-year trend in the following allocations. So what is the need to change that twenty to twenty-two? I just didn't understand that. So through the CIO to the Treasurer.
So, in the, in the process of, um, doing the evaluation of, of what's in that particular GL account, I went back actually two or three more years to see what was trending in terms of snowplow, uh, removal, and basic supplies and repairs. And between the Facilities Manager and myself, we determined that these new budget values are more indicative of, of the, of the spending trends.
Okay, so you're adding two thousand to the operations?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, this comes down to the issue of, uh, how we- we have not gone through the operational budgets on a line-by-line issue. We actually acknowledge that. Uh, and now we're adding another two thousand to it. Discussion of any?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So maybe staff could, uh, give a little bit of an explanation? Like, snow removal cost, we do the snow removal, right?
Through the Chair, um, at the Ingredion Center, no, it is done by a private firm.
Any reason why we wouldn't do it ourselves?
I hear a couple of people asking the same question. Okay, so through, through the CIO.
Certainly.
Uh, let, let, just before you start to answer, what's the quantum here?
Seven, seven one, seven thousand one sixty-nine.
Seven thousand one sixty-nine. Okay, so for the CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the, the rea- the reason that snow removal i- is done by a contractor is ba- based on the timing that the rink is open. And, and us only being able to utilize a part-time sidewalk plow operator who actually also operates the one ton, that is typically not able to get there, uh, prior to opening. So we, we have done, uh, a contractor to make sure that the parking lot is plowed in advance of the arena opening and allows us to, to, to get on the sidewalks for, and those dead-end roads.
Questions of any? Question?
Why couldn't we do the fire hall first and then the arena? Number two.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm handling here.
If, 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 if we were to take it back, our township, we do the fire hall first, probably the most important, get it cleared out, and then go to the arena right after, and be ready for it. I mean, we don't know when it's gonna snow. So we can't decide that. I, I guess what I'm saying is, for me, I have a hard time when we got, we just went by a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar plow going to and, and, uh, we're tendering it to a private contractor. I have a real problem with that myself. Not just myself.
So I think what, I mean, that's the question that's being asked, and I can, I can hear it coming from a number of sources.
If we also, um, have more parking there next year, we're probably going to pay more for it in stormy weather. If we can, if it's contracted out. However-
Let's go back and see if we can understand the rationale here. Um, so, so to the CIO. So, we're being told that the removal of the snow at the arena is tied to the opening time of the arena.
So, so, so typically, yes. Uh, once, w- once the arena's in operation, especially on the weekends, uh, it's, uh, once, w- w- once it's open, you're, you're, you're not going to be able to plow that park.
Absolutely, we understand that.
So, so that, that has certainly ran into some issues that way. And typically, what, what we try to do with the sidewalk, and maybe the road superintendent is probably better to, to, to answer that than, than myself, if you want to.
Sure.
Well, first of all, let me get a, an understanding of what opening time is. What time does the arena open?
On weekends, it's, uh, go ahead, Mike.
Through the Chair, um, the rea- the Ingredion Arena opens at seven AM every morning.
Every morning?
Seven days.
Alright, so the snow has to be plowed before that happens?
That is correct, so that staff can get in the facility.
Well, not only that, but public too.
Staff's the number one first to get in the building.
Right.
Um, and then, um, Monday to Friday, the doors open at seven forty-five. So the, uh, the seniors start showing up at seven thirty. On weekends, hockey starts at seven thirty. So people start showing up at seven fifty.
Okay.
So it has to be done prior to seven o'clock.
Okay, alright, so now we understand that seven o'clock is kind of the time at which that snow has to be cleaned away and, and the parking lot cleared. Alright, now through the CIO to the, to the Public Works Superintendent, why can't he get, why can't he get the snow cleared by seven o'clock?
Fair enough. Mr. Mayor, under Regulation two thirty-nine, roads are number one priority. Sidewalks have been just moved up to their number two priority. And parking lots, it don't just take this parking lot because we have this one here, we have the one over at the arena. And they're all under the same contract for this reason, is that our priorities are to keep on the roads and the sidewalks. We do our rounds. We have to start one road, we finish on another road for each, each route. And, and we try to help out at the, at the, uh, at the arena when we can. But again, our number one priority, roads, and then sidewalks. He, in his operation, um, the, the, uh, the Facilities Manager can't wait because he's worried about slip and falls. Um, so, we chose to go out for a tender to take, eliminate that issue. Um, I'm bigger than him, but I'm also older than him, and, well, might not win the battle, but, but it, you know, it's, it's, it's a constant battle to try and keep that parking lot open the way that he wants his facility run. So, so we have the contractor go in there. Eliminates our need to have, you know, um, get, get, get caught by not being able to get there.
Okay, but now go back on it, there's another element to this. You indicate that, or it has been indicated that, that the person who operates the sidewalk plow all, has a previous responsibility to roads and sidewalks. So his first responsibility is to roads, with a, with a road plow. So he, he goes to his road plow first. He does his route. And at the conclusion of his route, he's available for sidewalks, which are now second priority.
Correct, his, his route is short.
Yes.
His road route is short. He comes back, and that's the idea, is to, to allow time for the art, the plows to plow the road, and he can come back and do the sidewalks and not have to, they're not fighting over each other. Okay? So we have the seamless, um, conclusion to the, to the time here.
Okay, so now, uh, to, to the table. Uh, reactions from the table. From the table, go ahead.
On the snowplow contract, this, the figure that we see here, seven thousand one, that is only for the Ingredion Center, or is that any other, uh, parking lots?
Through, through the Chair, that is, that is for the Ingredion Center.
Okay. Next question then, is there a standby charge included in that seven thousand dollars?
No.
No, so, we must have a pretty good idea, he's gonna do us at a regular time.
So, so through, so through the Chair, there, there's not a standby time, but, uh, part of the contract is the requirement to have that plowed by opening.
Okay, so that's a, that's a condition-
That is a condition in the contract.
Thank you, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. You had the question, and so did Deputy Mayor.
It's dead horse. I, I, I definitely had the question, I struggle to think that, that we can't. Uh, we've heard the explanations as to, uh, as to why, and-
Sometimes you have to hold your nose, close your eyes.
I'm pinching it.
Mr. Bradley, you want back in?
No, I mean, no, I mean, I can tell how the others operate. I have another question.
On this same page, seventeen of thirty-two?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me, let me, I just want to make sure that everybody is comfortable with the understanding here because for the uninitiated, it makes, you know, for the uninitiated without having heard this discussion, you know, you, and I've, I guess this is about the third time that I've heard this discussion, and I have to have the reminder every budget cycle because I forget why is it that we with snowplows have to hire a snowplow? But when you understand the reasons for it, and the fact that we have, um, you know, we have liability risk, that there's a reason. So, uh, I think we've beat that horse, uh, you're raising another one.
I just want to know, uh, like, a little bit of a detailed explanation of supplies. Is that, is that consumables?
The fifty-five eight, eighty-five?
Yeah. Like, hand towels, toilet paper, and stuff like that?
Through the Chair, no, that would just be for items, uh, potentially tools and various things like that. We do have cleaning supply line item in the budget that's separate. So cleaning supplies like mops and that sort of stuff would be separate from that.
So what would this consist of?
Um, it would consist of, um, purchasing the ice paint and, um, board plastic.
The ice paints are all the weapons.
Yeah, ice paint is a weapon.
I mean, just expand on the word supply, is what I asked.
It's our-
Because it's a recurring charge, it would be a recurring charge, I presume, year after year.
I'll just give out the list of, um, seventy-six. Um, it's supplies from, uh, home hardware virtuals, home hardware for, um, items in the, uh, facility. Um, it's replacing of, um, the mats. Uh, we periodically have to purchase the new cow mats. Uh, they get damaged in the changing rooms. We replaced twelve of this year in the players' benches, um, at seventy-five dollars per, or sorry, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per mat. Those items like that. Uh, broken lights. Uh, different things. Batteries for all our, uh, hand sensor, uh, washroom facilities. Items like that.
Okay, moving down to re-
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry to be, uh, stick with this, but anyways, moving down to, I don't find it explains enough, that's all. Uh, description of repairs. Uh, there's several items there, plumbing, heating, boiler repairs, springboard repairs, overhead door, security camera. Are these anticipated? Like, in your budget, do you have an anticipated repair, uh, list?
Anticipated, um, not always, no. I mean, in some items like this, like the boiler, we didn't anticipate it going.
It comes out of the blue, right?
That is correct. The security camera replacement, again, we didn't anticipate it, but, uh, it got hit with, uh, one of our, uh, electra- or one of our surges.
Yeah.
And, um, it, it did its job by protecting, um, all the cameras, but the actual unit itself had to be replaced. So again, that's something that we don't anticipate.
So you have a line item in your operations budget for budget, I understand?
That's correct.
And, uh, what will be the twenty twen- uh, twenty-twenty, uh, do we know? Seven thousand?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Alright. Eight thousand, sorry, yes. For building repairs is eight thousand.
Yes, okay, I understand, thank you. Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Cameron, and then Counselor Dilabon.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay, thank you.
Counselor Dilabon.
I just have one here, uh, through the Chair to the manager. Overhead door repairs, twenty-seven hundred dollars. Small amount, but in two eighteen, didn't we put, uh, didn't we put a ten thousand dollar new door in there?
Yes, but we have more than one overhead door in the facility.
So this is another door that we repaired?
That is correct, that we repaired.
Oh, repair, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions with page seventeen of thirty-two? Alright, if I'm, no other questions with seventeen of thirty-two, then I'm moving to nineteen of thirty-two, which is the Public Works Vehicles Repair, uh, which, uh, we had asked for this report, and, uh, staff has provided it. And it ties in with twenty-one of thirty-two, which is the list of all of the vehicles, uh, showing some of their history. So, uh, I'm gonna start with nineteen to thirty-two, discussion of any? I don't know what it tells us because we're only, we're, we're only comparing, uh, through the Chair to the Treasurer, or through the CIO to the Treasurer. Uh, the twenty-nineteen numbers are for the same period as the twenty-twenty. In other words, the first, uh, up to February the twelfth. The twenty-nineteen values were in the financial system as of February the twenty-eighth. And the twenty-twenty values are in the system to February the twelfth. So we're comparing the, those two periods in each of the two years. What does this tell us? It tells us during that period of time, that short period of time, six weeks roughly, that repairs reduced from fifty-three thousand two eighty-eight to eighteen thousand one ninety-two. Is that what it tells me?
Yes.
Okay, so then my question is why?
I'm not the person to answer that question, sir. The individuals in the, in the department would be able to tell you the difference between, it's probably timing of repairs, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it's such, it's such a short period. So through the CIO.
Sure.
Sure. Through the Chair. Um, this year has been, uh, less of a winner, in my mind. Less work on the trucks, hard, hard work on the trucks. And, um, less breakdowns. And then I think it's also showing that our maintenance program is actually working.
Catching up?
Catching up. And I think that's reflected in the, very well reflected in the, the, uh, twenty-one of thirty-two there, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to twenty-one thirty-two in a minute.
I have a question.
But just before I go to twenty-one thirty-two, I'm gonna finish the discussion on page nineteen. Counselor Cameron.
On page nineteen, truck number five, International two thousand and ten, two thousand and nineteen re- are these the total repairs, eighteen thousand?
For the period.
What's the February?
January through February.
I'm sorry, just, I'm so sorry. Okay.
No, no-
No, January and, and February of two thousand and nineteen.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, my mistake.
Okay, so now I'm slipping over then, if there's no other questions with that page, and by the way, do we have consensus from committee that we would like to see these coming forward at a monthly, if not monthly, at Public Works, at least quarterly at Public Works? Do we have consensus that we want to see this report on a more frequent basis? I'd like to get that established. Any any comments? Your pardon?
I think it's informative.
Mr. Bradley.
Yeah, I think you need to see it.
Okay, Counselor Hunter.
I'd like to see see the year-end report, each year broke down like this and quarterly or six-month report. I don't think we need it every month, but.
Quarterly, quarterly. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I think quarterly is good, and if I can ask a question quick to to the to the road superintendent. Will the, do you know if the new software will make that easier for you to track in to report back on a quarterly basis?
I can't answer that, I'd have to vote.
We don't.
So through the through, yes, yes, it will.
I will, okay.
Quarterly?
Quarterly, yes, but just just a comment, a question, comment, uh, on the quarterly reports, could you have the thoughts a little bit bigger?
Yeah.
No, we're not talking that report, we're talking the one on page nineteen thirty-two.
Okay, that 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 thought is fine.
Yeah. Okay, so now, uh, I'm going to page twenty-one of thirty-two. And now at twenty-one of thirty-two, we see we see the history of some of these vehicles. And I'm gonna open the floor for discussion, but I have a couple of questions of my own, and maybe I'll use those questions to kind of start things. So through the CIO, I'm looking at truck number six, which I take to be a two thousand and fourteen international. And I see that the inner, the in-service dates for all the vehicles down to that one are January the first, which I'm assuming that that was something done to satisfy our asset management plan because we didn't have the in-service dates for the ones prior to that. So I'm taking January twenty-one, January the first, two thousand and fourteen to be the in-service date of truck number six. And I'm looking at twenty-fourteen, column showing repairs in twenty-fourteen. And it's showing me that there was no money expenditure on that vehicle in twenty-fourteen. Now, the conclusion that I would jump to when I put this all together is here is a brand-new truck that came into service on the first of January of two thousand and fourteen, and there wasn't a penny expended on it during its first year of life. Now, I know that can't be true, but that's what I see.
So 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 through the chair, as 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 you actually just stated, that you you, we didn't have those particular dates uh, with the with the in-service date, so it was January first. I I believe that that truck was was received in in the fall of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, which would be a logical explanation.
So.
Okay, so I'll take that explanation, and I'm gonna go a little bit further with it.
Certainly.
So now I'm down at truck number nineteen zero four, and it has an in-service date of November the fourth of two thousand and nineteen. So relatively new vehicle.
Correct.
In fact, it's a twenty-twenty, went into service on November the fourth. So it didn't get any service at all in two thousand and nineteen. So here the poor fellow goes to work on November the fourth, and he doesn't get a service all of November, all of December, sixty days, without any service, he gets no service in two thousand and nineteen. Now, that doesn't, I can't imagine that happening either. So what's happened here?
I'm I'm, I'm sorry, you're 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 questioning that there was no cost for forty-five or fifty days of two thousand and nineteen with a brand-new truck?
Yeah, should at least have a service, you would think, this is repairs, you know. Well, but I took this to be, by the way, I took this to be service and repairs. Is this not service and repairs?
Well, it's it it's maintenance and repairs.
Maintenance and repairs?
Correct.
So that would be service?
Correct.
Okay, so so that wouldn't, a truck, in other words, is sixty days would be normal to go? What what is our, what is our criteria?
Uh, I I wanna say it's quarterly for the for for the maintenance service.
It's a brand-new truck that went into service on the fourth of November.
Yeah.
The other truck below it is is the pickup truck.
Yeah.
It went into service on the third, uh, the the third of July.
Yeah.
Um, you're not seeing anything there because there were no expenses on those trucks, other than, I believe diesel's out of this, isn't it, not a day?
A few.
That's really all we pay for those trucks, because everything is is either fixed at the dealership, like, we did have four back and they fixed it, no charge, so it's under warranty. So the only thing you may be misleading is there is fuel charges.
Yeah, well, this doesn't show fuel.
It doesn't show.
We understand, yeah. Okay, any other discussion here? This gives you a history of these vehicles.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting if you look at some of the data. Like, you have a vehicle which is, it's kind of hard to read there, but truck number two for example. And it's got six years of life remaining.
Well, can I, can I get a clarification from that, from the treasurer? Does that mean it's six years over its life?
That is correct.
Yeah, it is.
It's past, it's not.
It's past, it's six years beyond its life. Oh, I thought we had six years left.
Is that because there's brackets?
Yes.
It's past the life.
Okay, and it's interesting that we spent four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars average over the five years. So maybe, I don't know who's driving it, but it's kind of pretty low, I mean, maintenance costs.
Yeah, that's an interesting point.
And then you go, for example, to some of the others, uh, where the average is up, for example, like truck four, it's up around twenty-three, but what interested me more was the spreads. And for, uh, like, in the case of truck four, sometimes when you get a data set, you know, if there's kind of a lot of spread between, like, actual data points, it's worthwhile having a look at a median, okay, rather than an average. The median for truck four is twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-one, and the average is twenty-three, five forty-four. So there's a little difference there, and one would ask why, uh, there was the forty-nine, fifty grand in two thousand and eighteen. If you look at truck three, the median is fifteen-two and the average is fifteen-eight, the data set's very tight. So that gives you an idea that truck three, which I think we're gonna replace.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's, uh, it's costing, the averaging looks good because it's costing just about what the average is. But when you get these outliers, you gotta, they draw your your attention and they affect the average, actually, distorted. But if you look at eighteen on truck, uh, number four, two thousand and eighteen, it's almost fifty grand, whereas previous years were eleven, twenty-four, eighteen, so on. So it kind of leads to what the heck happened, you know? I don't know if you guys ask those kind of questions or yourselves, you know?
Well, so 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 through the chair, yes, yes, we do. And and that forty-nine thousand was repairing because the thing was falling apart, because it's six years overdue.
I see that.
That's, that one is reality.
So.
Is that is that one staying or leaving?
Staying.
That 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 one will, the the plan is for that to to go to auction later this year.
Oh, okay, so he's leaving.
If you recall back that we, uh, committee chose to to make the, uh, what's it, four to five thousand dollar repair on the turbo.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's.
We 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 would keep it for this for for this winter period and then look to 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 take that to auction in the fall.
So I, that's why I think the reports are valid and reliable.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, I, I'm very thankful for this report. I think it's a great report that shows the age of the equipment. And and not only that for, I mean, I know it's not gonna change this year's budget discussion, but I think in the future budget discussions, so we can, you know, be well-prepared in advance, adding up, you know, we're talking about, Jack's pointed out, truck number four, that's seven-year or six-year average, adds up to a hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents of maintenance costs. The new truck that we purchased this year was two hundred and seventy. You know, I mean, divide those out into payments and and you've got a new truck for what you're paying in maintenance. So, I mean, you're paying maintenance or you're paying for a new vehicle. I think in future discussions, we probably need to think, you know, that way. And this this graph shows those numbers really well on the average costs. The other one that I that I that I wrote down out of it was the GMC, I believe the GMC Sierra, that's that's a two thousand and eleven, that we've spent twenty, over six years, we've spent twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars on, uh, to maintain, it's a two thousand and eleven. I mean, that's certainly more than than what the the payment, the operational payments would have been on, it's not just, it's crazy cost.
Yeah, be careful here because you're the one making the decisions.
Not this year, not this year, but for next year, I think.
You're talking, you're talking your language, Counselor Hunter.
He is, rid of that old equipment, can't do that.
You're paying it out either way, and I mean, you're gambling that it's that it's gonna last, so on some of it, it's obvious that it needs to be, needs to be done.
I, you know what, and and just to pick up on on what Deputy Mayor is saying, these kind of numbers don't lie, and I think that they become very educational for the people sitting at the table. And I think the more you can keep these numbers in front of us, the more you keep us tuned in to where the reality of your fleet is. That it it serves you well to put this stuff in front of us. Through the CIO, I see the road superintendent.
I appreciate numbers, and I appreciate the the driving force, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, the thing that you don't know is is the, and what we'll have to try and do is tell you what that truck does.
Okay?
Yeah.
Somebody, that that's part of the equation as well, and and somebody mentioned truck two. Uh, that's, truck is is our flat, it's it's sort of a ton and a half, it has a fuel tank on it, case around a bit of material here and there, but not much, it doesn't do much in the winter other than patch. Okay, what what you don't know is is truck three, which we're replacing this year, for instance, is is a is the oldest truck in our fleet now, other than the spare one we have. Um, and it's, it sits all summer with the water tank on it because it was one of our older trucks. Okay, so we made the conscious decision, let's not wear it right out, let's keep, you know, keep it, so we didn't use it in the summer. All the other trucks are, um, four, eight, three, or four, eight, two, eleven, five, seven, and six are all are all plow trucks. And they take a beating in the wintertime, and they also take a beating in the summertime. So so because they're hauling gravel all the time, hauling ditch material, that sort of thing. So those things need to be out there as well to help you, um, make informed decisions. And and certainly, we've put together a a list, a package report, a first, a book for each each truck. It has a description of what it does, uh, that was put out to council previous, uh, the first year I was here, I believe. Um, and, uh, so that will help everybody. And certainly, uh, truck six is our newest truck, other than the brand-new one. And you can see that the repairs are are really good, it's our newest truck. But it is getting moving up as it gets older, so that's that's the curve we want, we wanna see, and keep, if we keep replacing, we won't have that. Anyways, thank you.
Okay, um, good points, Counselor Cameron wants in?
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Guest, for this for this list. Uh, it is, as you said, most helpful. Other than maybe a larger font? Could we, could we also have the, uh, of the of the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and nineteenth, could we have totals on those as well? Could we have a a total column? Because we don't, we don't have a total column for that. Um, and and I did, I did the math, I I sat down and did the math, and some of the, some of the, over the, over the the period of time, like, we're pushing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, some, on on some of them. But but anyway, that that would be helpful for me that we could just include that column, thank you.
Okay, um, now, so we've had an opportunity to review that, we had asked for that information, it's here. I think as well, we'd like to see that information updated fairly regularly. Um, we've been through, uh, six E, the winter control, we've been through six F, the library, we've been through six G, the capital projects. Waterfront improvement, all right, so six G waterfront improvement, and what's my page reference there?
Page twenty-nine.
Page twenty-nine of thirty-two. Waterfront Development Committee has now received costings for Phase Two East of the Water Treatment Plant, based off rendered, uh, concept design number one presented at the Open House December sixteenth. The cost estimate is five hundred thousand. The waterfront committee is meeting on Wednesday to redefine the scope of work to a manageable value, a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for two thousand and twenty, and present at budget meeting number four. There is a regional economic development grant application submission deadline of February twenty-fourth that we're working to meet to may cover thirty-five percent of the cost. Okay, who wants to speak to this?
I can speak to to Mr. Mayor. Uh, we did have a meeting yesterday, uh, we are pretty much going back to the drawing board uh, to get it down from the five hundred, we don't know where it's gonna go. We're gonna send it out to four to five different, uh, architects who do, does this type of work. And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, I'll have a better answer for you at that time, so I can say this on this.
Okay, um, so now it comes down to next steps. And you would, you would like what your next steps are, we have a, we have a grant application going in, hard to say where it will go. Go ahead, you want it in?
Well, yeah, um, uh, struggling, other than having seen, you know, and been to one open public meeting, that that full council hasn't actually seen any of the recommendations before grant applications are being filled out. Struggling with not seeing the front, we're having a say in it so far.
Okay, so then it's a question of getting this, um, getting the work of the subcommittee out in in into the, into the hands of council. I think that's what you're saying. Um, so to the CIO, how how can we improve the information flow here so that the work from the subcommittee gets to the council committee either via, gets the council either via committee or via council meeting?
So so thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I think one of the, one of the items that, uh, as Counselor Dilva, as the as the chair has indicated, that we we kind of went back down to sort of rounds. that we, we kind of went back down to, uh, sort of ground zero, uh, so to speak, on, on, on the starting process. So, uh, and the committee will meet in, in, in two or three, uh, weeks' time, uh, have sort of a design criteria. And before that, uh, um, looks to go out, uh, anywhere that we, we would bring that back to committee, uh, and, uh, and council to, to ensure that they, they see that, um, document before it's issued. However, at, uh, due to the timing of the grant, we, we, we are, um, in, in the works of reducing that scope to a more basic design to, uh, to achieve sort of that a hundred thousand dollar range and, and meet that deadline so we don't miss out on, on a potential grant opportunity. That won't, um, it won't set us back any. It will be something that potentially we'd be able to expand on.
So, I'm going to, Deputy Mayor's going to get a follow-up here then. So, follow-up.
My, my concern is, is, and, and maybe I'm misplaced on this, but, um, that, uh, decisions from council happen, not at subcommittee, they come through council, uh, for, for the decision-making, uh, process. And, and it's not a, a committee of full council. And even when we make decisions here, committees of full council, they still, uh, need council approval, uh, on the Monday, the last Monday of every month. So I'm struggling with, um, uh, the way that the, the project is, is setting out and really not having very little information, um, so far. I support the project fully, um, but I'm struggling with this process just a little bit.
And, okay, so, um, and, and again, I, uh, I, I, I think what is happening here is that, that, that this is our first experiment with what we might call an ad hoc committee. And, uh, the clerk is, uh, is looking at me. And I, I guess what we have to do is we have to get the minutes from those ad hoc committee meetings blended into and coming forward. And if there are recommendations, uh, we have to get them coming forward as well. So, Counselor?
Uh, yes, just, uh, just to, uh, to, just to expand and answer a couple of questions from the Deputy Mayor. We have to remember that it was only February fourteenth that we got the initial, uh, dollars, dollar value of the, uh, East End Phase One, uh, project. So, meeting, meeting, uh, meeting on the Wednesday, the following Wednesday. And then the grant has, is, is due for February twenty-fourth. The timing just was, was bad.
And, and if I, if I can, um, and I, and I understand that timing is of the essence, it still doesn't trump policy protocol and, and, you know?
Yeah.
If, if, if I, if I may through the chair, uh, I, I simply dropped, dropped the ball with respect to the process of protocol and if, if it will be correct moving forward.
Counselor Hunter?
I just have a similar concern to Deputy Mayor, but, uh, mentioned here, we got this price back. To me, it's not any shock. I, I actually would have been more, more than that. So I don't think it was a shock that this was what we're going to come back after this proposal. Comes the deal, they're going back up, architects to get some different kind of drawings.
No, I think he, he, he admitted to, he omitted to, to, to describe the intermediary step, which the CIO has done. What the CIO has indicated is that now that the committee has met and realized that they have to go back to square one, the CIO now is, is going to put together a set of design criteria, which is going to be reviewed by the committee. And then after it's reviewed by the committee and before it goes out the door, it'll come back through council.
I, I follow that. Where we're getting to, when we get to this process we follow, where's the dollar figure coming to pay for it?
Well, that's a different issue.
That's what I'm getting at here. We're, we're planning this, we're doing a budget here. There's nothing in the budget as yet to cover any of this.
That's correct.
So, if we want to get done, we've got, the only thing so far that we've gotten in the budget is to pay for the docks.
Well, there was another item in the budget, which was a pre-budget approval from September, October, November last year. So through the CIO to the treasurer, maybe she can just refresh us as to what that pre-budget allocation was. And I don't know whether any money was expended in 2019 or not. I don't think there was.
Yeah. Anchors to the docks.
Anchors. Well. There's more to it than that.
Yes, so through, through the chair, the current 2020 budget in ecdev, ec- economic development is where the original monies were in 2019. We had money in there last year and we spent ten grand. It was twenty thousand, we spent about ten. We increased that line item in the 2020 draft budget from twenty thousand to fifty thousand.
In the draft budget?
In this draft budget, there is thirty thousand additional over last year's budget.
Oh, okay. All right. Now, how much of that, do you, do you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay, so now how much of that is committed to the work that has already been done? The design work that has already been done? Have we got invoices from?
No, we have no invoices as yet for, for anything design work-wise. We had some from last year, but I'd have to go back through the invoicing from last year to see if there was an invoice from last year.
Okay, but my question is, was the invoice from last year paid as a 2019 payment?
It would have been.
It would have been, okay. Fair enough. So that sort of clears up some of that. So that tells me that the majority of the thirty that's in there this year is, uh, fairly clean. It's not much of it has been earmarked. Okay. So we know roughly. And then we have the, the situation or the opportunity, I guess you would say, uh, from last night's meeting as well.
But I'm getting, getting, uh, from me again, Mr. Mayor, is we got, all this talk about improving our waterfront and, and developing it down there. It's great to do designs and it's great to have forced thought. We committed money, we've got anchored in, we've committed money to build the docks. We've got possibly money from last night's.
Plus.
Pocket.
Plus.
Why, why don't we commit here that regardless of what design we're going to do down, down there, the parking lot in front of the docks need to be widened and improved. So why don't we commit ourselves to doing that this year and, and work at the design next year or on down the line, whatever we can afford? But let's spend some money and get the park, but I'm not encouraging that awful much on, on the waterfront, but I have a lot of friends that boat and stuff down there. And the only complaint I hear about down at the waterfront is we need a decent parking lot and we need docks. We've got the docks, let's, let's give them a parking lot. And, and if we can improve the waterfront with benches and walkways and stuff later, later on through grants or something, that's fine. But let's quit talking and get something done.
With, with your chair, Mayor? Glenn?
Um, we, we are doing that, uh, Counselor Hunter, right now. That's what part of her is from the parking lot now. That's what we're working on as we speak this yesterday, to go back and get that, uh, going. So, put your mind at ease. We are, hopefully, going to start.
That, I, I attended the meeting yesterday as an observer. Got myself in trouble with the clerk because I didn't, I didn't declare that I would be here. But, I mean, I think the committee is, I think the committee is, uh, has a, has refocused here. And I think they're, they're moving in the direction that, that you're suggesting. And I think that that's what will become obvious when the CIO brings forward his report. Go ahead.
I, I think, uh, echoing Counselor Hunter's concerns, and, and I've said my concerns already, and I trust your judgment, you were, uh, at the meeting. But I, I think ultimately what Counselor Hunter's saying is that he's struggling with the, the committee structure and in bringing it back to council, uh, as well. And what happens if they bring back something that, that, you know, that council doesn't find palatable? Then we start all over again. I hear in his words that, that maybe it should be a, a council, a discussion and not, not a, a subcommittee discussion.
And, uh, you know, that, um, one of the reasons that we do things by committee as a whole is for that exact reason. So that everybody on, uh, the council is, is aware of the background to the, to the recommendations that are coming forward. And what you're suggesting is not totally out of, out of, out of the question. In my mind, it would be just a question of either how we wrap it into one of our existing committees, wrap that project into one of our existing committees. Or alternatively, uh, if everybody is more comfortable to do it, we can, uh, expand the ad hoc committee and make it a, make it all members of council and just find another date to hold those meetings. As you know, all of our Mondays are presently committed. But if we want to establish another committee for the purposes of working on this waterfront project, I mean, that's up to council to decide that. And, uh, it's certainly not out of the question that it can be done. But what it means is that we have to commit ourselves to another meeting date.
So through, through the chair, I, I would probably recommend trying to work that into one of the existing committees if you're going to do that as, as opposed to another, another, another date or, or another.
Yeah, in other words, yeah. In other words, add it as an agenda item to one of the existing committees, yeah. Okay, so that's an item that, uh, you, you know, you can certainly bring forward. This is a budget meeting, certainly have an item you can bring forward at a council meeting or a committee meeting and see where it goes. All right, I'm about to move on here. I don't think we have a lot left on this agenda except item number H. And, uh, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on item number H tonight for a couple of reasons. First of all, make a bit of an introductory. A week or so ago, I met with the, I, and, and I had asked for this meeting with all of the senior staff to talk about, uh, the spring, possibility of spring flooding on the river. And, uh, I was interested in two things. And, and I'm going to give you a bit of background because I want you to understand where this is coming from. When I talked to Mayor Burrow and Mayor Smith-Gatke and Mayor Malanca, all riverfront mayors, it's quite obvious that those three mayors intend to put a major, uh, effort forward this year to assist, uh, residents, uh, living on the waterfront. The reason that I met with the senior staff is I wanted a full review of how we handled the situation in 2017 and 2019. And that's what you see in front of you. I had asked them to prepare a full report. That's what you see in front of you. Then I said that in view of what the other mayors are doing, I want to make sure that our council is aware of the fact that other mayors are going far, far beyond or seem to be prepared to go far beyond the services that they provided last year. I'm getting Mayor Burrow talking about purchasing one, if not two, sandbaggers. I'm getting Mayor Malanca talking about purchasing, uh, the large tubing that they use in the Winnipeg area for flooding on the Red River. You know, when you come in quarter, quarter kilometer lengths or something, you fill them up with water and they rise up eighteen, twenty-four inches to, to provide a rubber dam. Uh, I'm getting, uh, quite a number of initiatives being proposed by Mayor Smith-Gatke. I don't want our council to be unaware of what is going on around them. Now, when I met with our staff, it's quite obvious that our exposure, if I can put it that, to rising water on the river seems to be, um, relatively isolated to a number of sections. I think we're aware of some of those sections. Hilltop Road, Bay Lane Road, I think it's called, Bay Lane, it's called. Uh, Tuttle Point, uh, I mentioned Hilltop Road. So our staff tells me that during 2018, we identified eleven properties. I think there must be more. But we identified eleven properties that were in fact flooded up to the level of the floors of the, of the houses. So this is, this report that you have in front of you, you have to be aware that there is no money. Well, I think there's two thousand dollars in this year's budget.
That's correct.
There's two thousand dollars in this year's budget for assistance, flood mitigation assistance, if I can put it that way. But that's it. If we're going to do things like filling sandbags and having pallets full of sandbags available, we have to consider what that cost may be. If we're going to do things like going beyond just supplying sandbags, which we did last time, we dropped, we dropped loads of sand in convenient places last time. If we're going to go beyond that to actually dropping palletfuls of sandbags, that's a step beyond where we've been before, there will be a cost factor. Mayor Burrow is talking about actually building dams on low-lying areas. He has three low-lying areas. He feels that he will mobilize his fire department and they will go in and build eighteen to twenty-four inch dams in those low-lying areas. I want you to be aware of that. So we're getting into an area that traditionally municipalities have not been. We have been in the firefighting business for many years, but we haven't been in the flood fighting business at all. So this report, I think, basically speaks for itself. And the CIO that prepared the report asked some very interesting questions. And I think the committee has to deal with those questions. I'm not going to deal with them here tonight. Is committee willing to continue to fund these activities out of general taxation? Is the committee prepared to have frontline staff work overtime hours filling bags and/or tracking product? Is the committee interested in investing in a shared capital purchase of a sandbag filler with neighboring municipalities along to St. Lawrence? Those are the types of questions that we'll be dealing with. Won't deal with them at tonight's meeting, uh, but they will. I'm going to ask that this, uh, that this report be brought back on budget meeting number five and we'll have to talk about it there. Now, I'd like to just end this meeting by having, uh, through the CIO, having the, the treasurer summarize where we are and see whether or not there's an appetite around the table to go any further here tonight. So through the CIO to the treasurer.
From the last, uh, amount of one-thirty-nine, one-seventy, I did not actually take off the eleven thousand yet because there's not been a consensus of council whether that is going to reduce the tax rate or not. That has not been a consensus. But I have added the two thousand dollars, uh, operating costs in recreation for the building repairs. So we're at one-forty-one, one-seventy.
And what percent is that?
Probably two-point-three, I think.
Was forty-one, one-seventy?
Yeah. Two-point-four-five.
You think it would be around two-point-three?
Two-point-four-five.
Two-point-four-five. So are we, and so that, in the document that is six B. Six B? Yes, that's eleven, page eleven. Couple of pages of it. When the document was prepared, we, we talked about proposed 2020 rate, tax rate. So at preparation time, the proposed weight rate was three-point-three-three. Now would we, uh, as of now, the proposed rate would be two-point-four-five, right? Okay, so if, uh, these are just some observations from, uh, earlier this, yesterday. If we look at page thirteen. If we look at page thirteen, and look at revenue, uh, taxation revenue, grants and all that stuff. We're, uh, 2020 budget, the proposed budget is just about equal to the proposed, or the 2019 budget, which, uh, we weren't too far off would be an actual fact. So revenues are not going up and, uh, are holding above their, their own. And, uh... But the, but the, when we get into the departmental revenues and get down to the total revenues available to us, we're going to be 182,000 short. That's at the time this document was prepared, so it'd be some slight change. That's 182,000 variance. Revenues, yeah. Like it was 9.9 million was the proposed budget at preparation time. Okay, now we've taken some stuff out tonight, okay? Not out of revenues? Not out of revenues, but we've taken some of the expenses out. So those numbers are still pretty good at home, you know, pretty good. We had nineteen budget of 10.1 million. And we're looking now at a 2020 budget of 9.9 million because of adjustments in revenue. So then when we go over to the expense side and if we go to page sixteen, we can see that, that our, uh, operating expenses have gone from 7.7 million to 7.9 million. And that'll be slightly adjusted based on some decisions we've taken there. And it transfers to capital reserve, which has gone from 410 to 360, a reduction of 50, uh, which in my view is sort of the wrong direction they're going, but... Uh, and then capital expenditures, 2.0 million to 1.9 million. So we've, we're cutting capital expenditures. So what we're doing here is we're going to increase the tax rate to, to 2.45. We're not increasing any of the services. In fact, we're reducing services. So we're asking our people to not even maintain the level of services that we're providing. And yet we're going to increase the tax rate on it. So I think it's, it's, it's not a kind of future-looking system that I think people would be, uh, eager to move into. Yeah, but, but remember, there's one major factor here. One of the major factors is we take a hundred and ten thousand dollar shortfall that our Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund ran. I mean, so that's a reduction in our revenue that we've made up from other sources. Yeah, and we have no control over that. No, no, we don't. So what we're getting, we're... And inflation marches on, even if it's only one or two percent. Well, then you got a C P I A index in Canada about 2.2 or 2.1. Yep. And, uh, and the governments, the provincial government is obviously in a, a mode to cut and will likely continue to cut. Uh, you know, now we got that 500,000 for modernization of the last... But it's just, I, the scenario is not an attractive one, really, in my view. Everything goes up?
Mine's just a couple of questions if I, if I can. On, on page fifteen of thirty-two, going to the curbside, we're just going to re-site. The, uh, four oh three E is written as an actual. Is it going to be reduced?
We are in, uh, through, through the chair, sorry, I'm overspeaking, C A O. We, the C A O and I and myself will be speaking to the contractor next Tuesday to have a, a discussion about, uh, the 2019 number.
And can I continue?
Yep. Okay, so just by way of explanation, there, there's a, there's a problem with the billings. We think there's a problem with the billings. Yeah, so we think that that 2019 actual will probably, in all likelihood, will reduce.
Will, will it, will it ultimately, was the, was the, was the budget, uh, 2019 budget number, the 356.7, was that based off of the contract?
It was.
So do we expect the 403 to go back to the 356? Is that reasonable to think it's going to go back that much?
Not, not specifically to that amount, uh, because there is some changes in, you know, tonnage and stuff. So there, it won't be an exact amount, but there will be, we're hoping if we can negotiate or speak to them about the, the overcharge in billing, that we can reduce that amount.
So we're, we're going to see, and, and I'm assuming that that's why the, why the proposed 20 budget is at, is at 363.5 because we anticipate...
An index on the contract.
Right, and, and the actual number of 403 being closer to the 363?
403?
Like the actual number for 2019? Like without seeing the 2018?
Without, I can't speculate where, I can't really speculate.
Fair enough, other than that, that number, that line item number will, will be re-reduced.
But we're hoping that is...
That, that, that is the goal and, uh...
But I'm, but I'm wrong in thinking that I'm going to find one percent there, right?
That you, you would be incorrect.
My, my other, uh, I have one concern on this page and, and it, uh, would go up to the Conservation Authority. And, um, uh, the, the, uh, line item there for the proposed budget represents almost a 20% increase. They continue, uh, as of, uh, two weeks ago, they're expanding their territory and seemingly their scope. Um, I'm curious if they've reached out for more, for more, more support than what we're allotting there? Uh, and if not, do we anticipate hearing from, or ask for more?
Typically, through the chair now, typically the levy, uh, that the, that the Conservation Authority provides us is, is based on their projected budget. And we usually do not see a change in that levy. That's, that's, uh, flagged initially, you know, in about November or so, we get a, a letter stating what the, uh, the ask is for the, for the following year. So I don't, I don't perceive that to change.
And that's the ask?
That is the ask. Paid quarterly.
I'll be one more. Uh, I just want, I just want to, uh, commend, uh, the treasurer of the C A O and, and the road super for, uh, the increase and, and, uh, continuing the in- increase for, uh, the hardtop maintenance and, and the loose top maintenance with, with the winter we're having. I think that that will be, uh, money well, well spent and those roads are going to be good at that for sure. So I'm, I'm glad to see that, uh, that commitment in there.
Okay, any else in here? Okay, all right. I think I'm at the point where now we can pull the meeting to an end. Uh, I have item number seven on the agenda, which is council inquiries or notices of motions. Do they have anything to bring forward? None, yes?
Sort, sort, sorry, Mr. Chair. I was just, uh, I just kind of wanted to poll to see where kind of committee felt if, uh, if instead of having a separate budget meeting number five, if it might be able to be, uh, potentially finalized as the next admin finance meeting as, as an agenda item. I'm just curious on how much, what that feeling is or if, if it's the will of committee to have another full, uh, night of...
Okay, so way I'm going to deal with that is I'm going to go around the table and get each one to express their feelings. Are we close enough here that when the staff pulls all this together, pulls together all the things that we've done, that we've done tonight? We know that we'll be in roughly the 2.3, 2.4, 2.2 territory. So the next question is, do you want another full budget meeting to, uh, go back through this again? Or do you just want a mop-up type of meeting, uh, which we could, uh, have as part of the admin finance? That's the issue, all right? I'm going to ask for speakers. And I'm not going to go around the table, I'm going to ask for speakers. Let's see who's going to speak first.
I'll speak first. How, uh, what's the timeframe for admin finance up like right now? Are they going to be a real busy, long-gragged-out meeting or have we got time to work in?
Any discussions?
I, I think, I think we're okay. It's, it's, it's not an extremely heavy agenda.
Okay, so...
Half an hour extra, that, if you manage to do that and...
Okay, so now, now the difficulty there arises from this situation. Council's on the 24th. We had this, we had scheduled our budget meeting number five for next Thursday night. And admin finance won't take place until ninth of March. So if we don't do anything, I mean, if, if we, if we deal with it at admin finance, that means we've got to cancel budget five meeting tonight. That's what that means. Okay, so what's your feeling?
I think for myself, uh, through you, to, to C A O staff, do we anticipate any, uh, percentage changes to the operational budget from what's presented now?
Other, other than the changes that have been discussed at committee, there will be a small change, you know, between the library grant dropping and adding back the vehicle. So there is, there's going to be certainly change to what we see in front of you tonight.
So you're, you're talking, uh, like, uh, 10,000 here. We're not talking like a hundred thousand dollar change here that's going to result in, in two percent. We're, we're talking, uh, micro, micro numbers?
Yeah, right. There's, there's no other changes. The draft budget that's in front of you has been only modified by council at this particular point in time. There will be no changes by staff.
Do you anticipate any more adjustments by the auditors or are they out of the picture now?
The auditors come in in March, but they won't have anything to do with 2020.
So looking for speakers. Okay, uh, we're sitting around 2.45, uh, 141, 170. I say let's forget, uh, budget, budget meeting five and take it up at the, at the finance. And we're going to shave off 0.2 or 0.3% or something because it's inconsequential. Yeah. Okay, so we're, in other words, we're, we're at that point where we have to make a decision. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we've beat the thing to death, really. I think we've done our due diligence, if you have a question. Okay, so I've got one speaker for wrapping it up in the admin finance if we can. Uh, anybody else want to speak?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm quite comfortable with wrapping it up at the admin finance and drop budget number five. The only caution that I, that I have is we've seen it time, several times before where we allow a certain period of time and then we end up getting rushed. And I really hate that to happen, but I'm, I'm comfortable with, with admin finance.
Okay, so admin finance doesn't come until March tonight. Where are you, Counselor Dilva?
I hate to be, I hate to be the black sheep. We have, we have a clock for the 27th. I, I feel more comfortable if we just had that, maybe not as long, I'm sorry, guys, but not as long.
Chair, you don't, you don't, you don't have to apologize.
No, I, I really, myself, I liked it, uh, 27.
On the 27th?
Yes.
That's speaking for the 27th. Where are you?
Uh, I, I echo Counselor, Counselor Dilva. It's scheduled, it's, it's in the schedule. If, if, if there's anything that needs to come back on the ninth for, you know, full, full approval, then we could get there, uh, on the ninth. But I, I prefer to deal with it on the 27th, this would be better.
Okay, and Counselor Hunter?
I agree with you. The admin finance, I don't think, uh, I think we beat it to death. Here, I don't think there's much more to discuss on it.
Mr. Bradley, Mr. Robertson?
I say do it at the admin finance. I mean, it's inconsequential to me. I mean, the thing is, we're at where we're at. Make a decision, that's it.
Mr. Robertson?
That's my feelings also.
Okay, so we've got about half and half here.
Give us enough time to do the job.
Okay, well, all right, we'll, we'll meet again on the 27th. Can the staff be ready for the 27th?
To, to the chair, I, I believe so. We, we can make those changes relatively quickly.
Six, six o'clock again is what we have scheduled. Yeah. Okay, so, uh, question period, and I don't see a less gentleman have a question. So item number nine, I'm just going to speak briefly to the mayor's report. Uh, just a reminder about eight thirty tomorrow morning at the Merc Hall for the B R and D E follow-up. And then last thing to report. So today was the third meeting that I've attended concerning the changes that are going to occur in the governance of policing. The act has been passed. Uh, the model will be changed so that there are no more section fives and section tens. And, uh, every, the intent of the act is that every municipality that has policing from the, uh, Ontario Provincial Police will have representation on a police board. The act, the intent of the act is that the police boards will be aligned with the county detachments. So here we are in Grenville County. Grenville County will have a police board. The question is, will it have one police board or two police boards? So there's been two meetings in, in, uh, Grenville. Counselor Hunter, Counselor Dilva, Counselor Cameron, myself attended the first one. The issue was clearly, North Grenville is 35% of the population of Grenville County. They feel that they should have their own board, possibly with Mayor Phil Wolford involved. That seems to be the emerging consensus. That would leave South Grenville to have a second board in the county if the province allows it. The second board in the county would consist of Prescott, Augusta and Edwardsburg Cardinal. Then the whole thing gets into how many people on each of these boards? How many people does Edwardsburg Cardinal have on the board? How many people does Prescott have on the board? And the whole thing is up for discussion. So the second meeting, or the third meeting was today in Brockville. It was all of Eastern Ontario at a roundtable. Uh, again, the Solicitor General presenting the rough outline of the legislation saying, tell us how to do this. So that's where it sits. You're all in the picture now. And that's, with that said, I'm going to call for the, um, motion to, we have no closed session, call for the motion to adjourn. Counselor Dilva, moved by Counselor Dilva and seconded by Mayor, Mr. Bradley. Those in favor? Motion is carried.